We're good.
All right, following the order of five or three. Um, some announcements, uh, the West Newbury Community Choice Power Supply Program. Opt out deadline is today. Uh, the program itself begins April of twenty twenty five. Uh, the second announcement is we have a call for volunteers, specifically a West Newbury rep to the Whittier Tech School Committee. And there's other openings also on the volunteer tab on the town webpage. Item A, public comment, anybody here or online? Okay, move on to item B, town manager updates.
Okay, uh, first update is on the, uh, we had the kickoff meeting. With the Intermodal River Watershed Association regarding the map, uh, Division of the Ecological Restoration Culvert Assessment Grant they had received. Uh, so we had basically everyone participating for the town, which you expect, uh, you know, Butch, Paul, Clay, Christine, myself. And I gave you a hard copy of this map. We didn't include it in the packet because it's like nine mags and it would crunch the, the packet. But basically this is their starting point. Uh, these are the culverts that show up in the database they're working with. So, uh, this has been, uh, this is actively being reviewed by primarily Butch and Paul, who have by far the most kind of on the ground knowledge of the town, just an institutional memory, both of whom, you know, having been here two decades or more. Uh, basically there, uh, the DER work product is going to include, uh, assessment of fifty-five culverts in town. So this is just nothing but good. It's an enormous boon to the town. We're going to get a lot of data then. Uh, you know, documentation of condition, size, um, you know, materials, all of that stuff. Uh, so part of what, uh, will be determined with this to get them some feedback is, uh, make sure there's not any that we might know of that, that they haven't reflected. But also to make sure that they under hear from us, uh, upon what kind of the, the shortlist of the ones that we are, are most, uh, of interest. Uh, so the, we just had the kickoff meeting. I honestly forget if it was last week or this week, it was sometime in the last week or so. Their, uh, the grant that, uh, they're working under, their work has to be done by. You've got two guesses and the first one doesn't count.
One doesn't count.
So yeah, June thirtieth of this year. So basically my approach to this is to say, thank you. We're going to get a bunch of good information from a very, uh, you know, reputable, uh, team, uh, that we would not have, have gotten on our own initiative for, you know, who knows? And it's been on, on my work list, uh, and Rick can attest to this, since my very first year here to improve the stormwater mapping townwide. So this is going to be, I think, a big step toward this, um, not just on, on mapping location, but the condition and so forth. So this is going to inform future caporal planning and operational planning and so forth. So I think it's, it's pretty exciting. It kind of fell out of the sky and, um, you know, we'll do our part to make sure they get the information they need to, to get right to work on their inspections and so forth.
These are actually not all culvert, but they're, they're, these are, it looks like some of them are, are, well, let me do them. Three of them. Four are actually on the artichoke. I think.
Yeah, well, I'm seeing, uh, yeah, I'm seeing the milk pond dams on there.
Yeah, that's, that's not negative, just right.
Yeah, yeah. So this was, this basically they exported this from, uh, like I said, whatever database. And I don't know what the, the source, but they had some database that's kind of, I assume, got information across the state and that's kind of their starting point. And so, uh, Butch and Paul primarily will be kind of ground truthing that. Um, so, uh.
Is this going to include all culverts or is it just a certain classification of culverts? Cause.
I wondered if it was a size, like anything lower.
This one right by property that goes on the main street and it's not on this.
Yeah, I would say, you know, and we can get this, we are going to get this printed at poster scale and we could even do those for each of you. And any input is definitely welcome. Uh, we just got this, uh, we didn't have it at the kickoff. They sent it as a follow-up. Um, and, uh, basically our, our next step is going to be to print a poster size and have Butch and Paul mark it up. But, um, you know, the more inputs, the better. Let's say there end up being seventy or eighty total. They'll do fifty-five. So, you know.
So, so, so we can actually, uh, edit the listing, the, the, the selection of fifty-five.
Yeah.
So, and, and how was this particular listing? Again, this isn't a negative, I'm trying to understand. How was this listing, listing selected or who selected it?
I don't know. I, I think it's just, it was described on the, the Zoom call is basically like, I think a download of data from, I don't know if it's Master GIS or if there's some other, uh, data source, uh, but it's, it's some like data source.
Curiously too, the two culverts who are most significant to us right now, thirty-seven and seventy-three coffin, neither one's on there.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what this means.
Well, it means, you know, when you start with statewide data, you, you know, you get what you get and then, and then you refine it locally. So.
Well, I mean, you know, probably, I mean, we might not want to use that, their resources for those anyway, because they're going to be so well defined.
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to map the culverts, you say, these are all the culverts, you guys, you guys start at the same basis point.
Yeah. So yeah, the mapping is, is correct and the assessment is correct. Yeah. I mean, we don't want them assessing those two, but, but certainly they, you know, we want to, we'll get a complete map and then we'll get assessments of fifty-five.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, next one, the, uh, separate DER grant for the River Road cover. Uh, we had a, a quite, uh, you know, significant meeting today. Uh, Rick was part of that as well as Clay and Butch and Christine. And, um, they basically presented the results of their hydraulic and hydrologic analysis. Is that what HH? Hydraulics, hydrologic, uh, and, um, they, we, we had not gotten the slides ahead of time. And there were some glitches with the slides. It sounds like there was some server issue with the vendor and they had to recreate the modeling like right up until like shortly before the meeting. And you could see there were some typos on the slides where they had obviously cut, pasted from their other community and, and had some numbers that were wrong. So we took everything with a grain of salt. That's fine. Um, and they'll send, they'll refine the slides and, and correct those errors and improve some of the labeling and make things, you know, clear in a couple of respects. Uh, but once we have those, those will be, uh, sent to us and we'll send them around. Uh, but basically they, uh, outlined at a incredibly, you know, high level. Um, three different potential sizing options for that cover. And, uh, I don't want to go too far with that tonight because you don't have it in front of you and, and all we have is what we saw, we didn't get a document. But basically it was a, a pretty, you know, pretty significant meeting. Uh, I did ask them whether the consultant scope included once this is all refined, included any public presentation and it does not. Uh, and I made clear that, uh, no one on the today's meeting has the authority to make any kind of either binding direction or, or even like, you know, in terms of whether you'd want option A, B, or C, or something else. None of us there were able to speak to that and, and we were getting a large amount of information kind of right on the spot, not having gotten ahead of time. So, you know, I made clear the select board is the, uh, highway commissioners and, and would want that information. And, and basically the George Ann that the state kind of reemphasized that this is like just a case study. They're not intending to get to that level. It's not about like getting to the right answer for our cover. It's more about this is a illustrative case study. Uh, so, you know, we're going to get the most we can out of it. But it, my take away from some of what she said and, and like Rick's thoughts too, because he was there was, uh, uh, the consultants, I think at this point are more focused going forward on the skybook and the kind of workbook they're putting together. Um, so I don't know realistically how far any kind of design, I, it doesn't seem like it's probably.
I don't.
Really scratch the surface or anything, but that's not to say it's not helpful. And, and I, and I think it will be, it will be something. And, uh, this, their scope is going to include, uh, an overview of permitting implications. Uh, and we'll see to what degree of detail probably are pretty, you know, we'll see how much detail, but. That's today.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm actually not, it's not clear to me. Um, other than, you know, building their, their guidebook, um, it's not clear to me what they're trying to accomplish relative, exactly what they're trying to accomplish relative to West Newbury. Uh, I, I, I don't know what the, the, the net, um, if we were to execute whatever they, whatever conclusions they might have, I don't, it's not clear to me what they're hoping the results will be, like what's going to benefit, um, you know, is it an ecological? I mean, it's DER, um, but what is the ecological benefit? And I'm not saying that there isn't one, but I, I don't know what it is. And, you know, and what is the interaction with, with, um, with people? Um, it, I'm just not sure. So. Again, it's not a negative. I'm, I'm sure there'll be useful information, it'll be takeaways.
I, I think they're wrong. Yeah. But, but, you know, we've got to manage our expectations, but we've done that right from the start. Yeah. So. Uh, and like I said, once we get to the slides, we'll, we'll send them around. And, uh, even though it's not part of the consult scope to present them in a public meeting, obviously there will be a select board packet and it will be discussed at a future public meeting. Uh, next item, I just included a couple of snapshots. Uh, as you know, these, uh, this is, this was, uh, basically a safety, uh, project, uh, given the condition of the uh, edifice here and, um, the fallen material that had taken place. So this had been designed by a structural engineer under the oversight of, uh, G and out. And, uh, Brian, uh, constructed this, you know, under the, uh, oversight of Sam and, uh, it's done. It's safe.
Is that Brian standing there?
That is Brian standing there and he assured me that he was belted in with a ballet.
All right.
He said he was intentionally standing to obscure it to make himself seem brave. Uh, he, he assured me.
You know, he's supposed to have like a chest harness, not a belt.
It's probably under his sleeves. I won't confirm that.
Sure it is.
So then what's the, the long-term?
It's safe. Right now, that, that was, that's, that's as far as we've gotten. So that's.
Well, we've, I've requested a price to do, to rebuild it. I don't want that to ever end up.
I, I do recall something, I recall you remember you asking that. I, I want to say we might have either, we might have gotten that.
I think you got a rough number from, yeah, somebody and then I wanted to use our funds, but they went elsewhere. I just don't know where we left it and I feel bad.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, the immediate priority was kind of make it safe. We've done that. So I think this is something that, you know, obviously if you've been by, it's not the most aesthetic thing.
We're going to paint it to look like bricks, right?
There was actually some discussion when this was shared at the staff meeting of, of maybe invite Antacar Arts, maybe, you know, if they want to do a mural or, but it's going to be there for the time being. I'll say that. So it's, it's, uh, you know, it's not the.
Rather than having paint.
For a miracle, but it's safe and people can come and go and not worry about.
I personally have a glass of light in the building.
I'm kind of with you. Yeah, you got to talk to Antacar Arts to say rather than put a stage and paint on that, measure it, get them a canvas and then you can apply the canvas over.
That's a terrific idea. Yeah, that's a terrific idea.
So you could then repurpose it when the building's.
So that will last as long as the day I'll serve it.
Good. The installation of Key West Entry, you, you may have noticed on your way in, that's, that's humming right along. Uh, all the cabling was done as part of the, when the phone cabling was done and, um, I, uh, Brian introduced me to the vendors. Uh, so we're going to have push button activated, um, doors at this entrance, this entrance, the annex, the back entrance. Uh, so this is just, you know, one more step of implementing our ADA, uh, transition plan. And I, I think it was a very, uh, heads up move, uh, for staff to kind of recognize that with a cabling, there was an opportunity for efficiencies. Um, and, you know, pricing wise, and, uh, so that's going to be done probably before we know it. I, I don't want to put a timeline out there, but I, I guess, you know, I think it's going to be pretty soon and then people are going to just be, or press a button and, or will, and they're doing the same thing over the library as well. So. Some, uh, some of these, uh, projects that have been in discussion for a while are kind of coming, uh, coming to fruition. Uh, on the telecom, the, uh, server was installed. They were here, uh, I think it was Monday. Uh, they were down in the basement. All of the hardware is in, all the cabling's been done for a while. The phones have been delivered. They are here in the building. Uh, and, uh, next week they're going to be put on people's desk, but not plugged in. Uh, and then it's going to be the week after that, uh, we're going to, we're going to need to do a bunch of trainings with all staff, make sure everyone's familiar with how they work. And, and then, uh, the estimated cut over date is going to be April third is going to be when it's going to, and right now, part of what they're doing with the phones that are here is getting them all programmed with the right extensions and so on and so forth. So that's, that's.
Been a long time.
It is, and we just, every single day, we have problems with these phones. And, and it's customer service issues. People get disconnected. People are put on hold and they're, they end up getting, you try to transfer someone, you lose it.
We couldn't call.
Or, yeah, we couldn't call out the other day. I, I kept getting an operator intercept. So I started calling people for my cell phone because it was, and, and then I thought it was maybe on their end. And then I realized everyone was having the same problem. You couldn't make an outgoing call.
No other problem.
And there's a reason we pushed this thing with urgency. It's, it's, uh, long overdue. So. Uh, solar panel installation, uh, this is another one really exciting. I don't know, Rick, if you have any insights beyond just.
No, I look at the roof. I looked at Christine's office window and saw exactly that.
Yeah. So that's, that's pretty cool. Uh, finance department, uh, annual report, we issue this every year. This is, uh, part of the continuing disclosure requirements, uh, for our bond rating. Um, that's due, I think it's due by the end of March every year. So. Uh, I worked with, uh, Caitlin, Jenny on that and, uh, I sent it around, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's submitted for this year. So if you find anything you have questions about, let me know and we can make an offer next year. But that's always a team effort, uh, really primarily me, Jenny, Caitlin. We get data from others on building permits and revenues and so forth. But, uh, but it kind of chip away at that.
Did the thin comp get copies today?
Uh, I haven't, but I, it's.
I think it's a great talk.
It is.
Information.
Yeah.
It's a fun read.
Yeah, it's, it's good. I mean, we definitely, like, like everything, it's, it's much better than it was six or seven years ago. Uh, definitely every year we like, we're, and although it, I'll say the last probably few have been primarily just data updates. Uh, but we do update, like, if there's a substantive change, you know, we, we, we like it.
It explains everything. It's an overview of all. I sort of enjoy it. It's weird.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not surprised that you read it, Chris. Um, but, but I'm glad, I'm glad that you did.
And again, I think the thin comp would appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Uh. Uh, next one, uh, feasibility for, uh, enter pickleball. We're, we're going on a couple of levels here. We did get a vote from the Park and Rec Commission last Monday, uh, consenting to the, uh, continue the inclusion of the site next to, um, the Action Code Playground. They were, uh, supportive of that continuing to be the kind of primary site that we're looking at. They knew that following their vote, we were going to start actually spending money toward that in terms of wetlands and survey. Uh, and so I, I, you know, I wouldn't overstate it, say they've approved it, but I think at this point it was very favorable response. Uh, it was two of three members, one of them refused appropriately. Uh, so basically we're going on two fronts now. One is we put together the scope in the packet on wetlands and survey. We're shopping that around, trying to get, uh, someone who could get that done. You know, fairly, you know, relatively soon, uh, the surveyors are all backed up, but we're working on that. And then also, uh, Brian's been in touch with, uh, vendor who did the work in Groveland and has done a lot of other pickleball and tennis courts on the North Shore. It has a really strong reputation. And, uh, they gave us a budget quote last week. Uh, I met with Butch and Brian and Caitlin Barker this morning to review that and we're refining that based on uh, what of, of what's in the scope, what we would be intending to do in-house or materials that we already stockpile. Uh, and could probably bring, uh, for, you know, less than what is embedded in the quote. Uh, the budget quote, just so you know, is, was about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Uh, I do think we can get it down to under a hundred with the, with the work we'd be doing in-house. But we're working toward getting a, a firm number with some contingency, uh, timely for the April second CPC meeting. Um, and ideally they would refer that out that night and then on April third, the thin comp and select board would be asked to go, uh, recommendation on the article.
Just for a reference on the CPA, they have a database of other projects and I just searched twenty twenty-three and twenty-four and pickleball construction was two fifty to four hundred thousand per two course. So.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Who was this?
All different towns.
Community Preservation Coalition.
Yeah, they have a database of all the projects.
I'm back up for a minute too. You said preferred location and we don't have any say in that.
Well, so back in January, we, we'd sent the, uh, that kind of, I.
All the different parcels.
Yeah, yeah. And it seemed like the, the board didn't take a vote, wasn't asked to take a vote, but the, uh, it seemed like the site next to Action Code was kind of far away, the most straightforward and, um, you know, in terms of proximity to, um, user groups and other recreational. So for instance, like the paid school front parking lot would be kind of a big can of worms with, uh, you know.
Four, five times the price.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Okay. I just didn't know how we get to the point where it said for adoption, if it's Parks and Recs makes that decision or we, I don't feel like we had a say in that particularly.
Okay.
Do we need to though? I mean, I.
I don't know. Somebody's going to say, how do we get decided? I don't know.
I think the staff did, you know, are employed through the feasibility study and I, I mean, I'm there with that.
But I think if there is, you know, if there's interest in, in looking back at that, having that on for an action item, I, I would, I would love to have the board's endorsement of, of a location. Um.
I, I think first blush, it's a good, you, you want to keep things together, you know, bath facilities, whatever. I don't know. I just was like, I, I was, I looked at, was I asleep at that meeting? I missed it or?
No, it was, it was on under town manager updates. It wasn't, it wasn't on as an action item. And then I think, um, it was really, you know, it was kind of the, in order to get, uh, cost estimate timely for this spring town meeting. We needed to kind of have an idea of location because otherwise, uh, it would be impossible to come up with a budget quote. Uh, so, um, you know, I kind of took the combination of the work. I, I think that site does kind of stand out as a, as a clear first choice. Uh, and then, uh, yeah, so, so we kind of ran with that.
So do you, do you want to have it as a?
I think if there's any question about it, I, I, I do think it would be important. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, I don't disagree with it, but I think it would, um, just kind of close it a loop. I think it would make sense.
Yeah, we could put that on.
For there to be a discussion and for it to be an action item. It seems to me.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I don't, I don't want there to be any question.
Even though it's parking right property? I mean, I could see if it was town.
Well, that's why I wonder. It's, yeah, this is one of those, but it's ownership of town fund.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I just think if there's questions, I'd rather talk them over in, in a board meeting than have, you know, something. You know, yeah, I would, I would.
So we are voting on it as an article vote?
Yes, yeah.
So you want to vote on it?
Hopefully we're voting on a positive. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So my biggest concern is, you know, pickleball is a thing. So Saturday morning, if you got kids at the playground, is the parking jammed up? We, you know, there's not a lot of park in there.
Right.
You get the basketball court too. Other than that, it's a, it's a great location, but that's my.
Yeah, and it would require a site plan review and, and, uh, and that is something that when I, I gave a verbal update to the CPC at their meeting a couple of weeks ago. We didn't have as much information as we have now. We, and we hadn't yet had the Park and Rec vote that took place last Monday. Uh, but I did say specifically to Anne Barbe, who's a member of the CPC, that this will require a site plan review. And if the planning board did, for instance, impose parking above what's there, that, that would pretty much be a deal breaker. Uh, which isn't say they can't do that, but you know, we would be basically counting on the, the fact that people can use the parking, uh, near the pants down and walk across the fields. It's not probably optimal, uh, but it's what we've got. And, uh, unless, unless we, you know, unless there is some better site, it, it's one of the constraints that we're working with.
I wonder if we could have, I mean, I know part of Park and Rec has talked about AD accessibility in that area. Could we have a path from the parking area to the?
There would be a path. Well, there would be a path. Oh, from the other one? Uh, we could, we could look at that. Yeah. When I met with Butch and Brian and Caitlin this morning, I, I, Butch is going, one of the things he's going to be putting together is uh, what would it cost in terms of materials to do a five foot wide stone dust to get from the Action Code parking lot through the playground to this? Cause it does have to be accessible.
Yeah.
Uh, but we hadn't talked about potentially a, a bigger path. So.
Okay. All right. So you want to put it on the next agenda there?
Sure. Yeah, we'll put it on for next week and, um, the article is to get construction costs. There's going to be a lot of details that aren't, you know, worked out, uh, in terms of site plan review and, um, you know, some of that sort of thing. But I do think if we're facing our, uh, proposed amount on, uh, you know, an anticipated site, it would be really important to kind of make sure we're all on the same page on that. Because if it did shift to, you know, the paid school front lot or, or something else, that would have, you know, cost implications. And that number would no longer be valid.
So these permitting costs could come from the original article, right? For the feasibility study? Cause I'm pretty sure that was part of the scope on.
Uh, oh, yeah. Oh, definitely. Things like the wetland delineation. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if, if we, I don't know how far we're going to need to go for site plan in terms of like, if we're going to need a stance plan or if it's going to be enough to have more of a, you know, conceptual plan. So, uh, one of the things on our list is to have a free application dated with the planning board, just to understand what their expectations are going to be in terms of, uh, you know, permit and documentation. Uh, open space and rec plan, there's, uh, quite a bit here. Uh, we've been going through the vendor, uh, process. We had two proposals and Wendy has a working group reviewing both of those. And then kind of out of, uh, left field, I'll say, we got no, uh, notice, um, that the state is actively in the process of updating the workbook that defines what's in an OSRP and so on and so forth, like a total overhaul. And so Wendy had her first process to my attention. She got it via, um, uh, I think from Vanessa Johnson Hall. Uh, but directly from Melissa Cryer, who's the administrator at the state. And, uh, it seems like, you know, at least from what I'm hearing, because I haven't, I haven't reviewed it in detail. But I'm told that the new workbook is generally an improvement and it's more streamlined and it's going to be better. But the fact remains it's new and it's different. And so uh, we did, uh, we put a lot of scope, uh, work into the scope of work that was sent out and vendors have responded based on that scope. And our feeling is that we would need to re-scope this somewhat anyway. And where we're on a end of the calendar year deadline, that's really difficult. So I met with Clay and Jangiri and we agreed that, uh, Clay and Jen are going to try to get on the calendar of Melissa Cryer and basically say, hey, look, uh, since this, and by the way, this has not been officially, uh, issued yet. Uh, when we first heard about this about two weeks ago, the expectation where they had been working toward rolling this out at a conference that took place on Saturday in Worcester. They did not get that done. Uh, it's not going to be ready for a couple of weeks. So, you know, basically staff are going to have to see if we can get a one-year extension on our current plan to give us till the end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, which I think is, is really going to be important because the last thing we want to do is hire a consultant, go through all this process, go update a plan based on the old workbook and be the last people in the state. Because we'd then be with that plan for seven years and we haven't outdated, not outdated, but basically uh, our goal would be to be on the cutting edge of the new workbook. Um, and, but the only way to really do that and to still allow for the kind of public process and time we're going to need for this would be to, um, have a one-year extension. And, and I, I told Clay, I think we could live with a six-month extension to get through June thirtieth of, of next year. Uh, so they're going to make that request and, uh, I'm specifically not going to be part of that so that if we don't get the answer we want, me and Wendy can maybe then try to ratchet up the request, but.
I did make the request by email, you know, just to kind of float it out there. So, so it shouldn't be a shock.
Yeah. So I hope, I mean, this, we, the state regs allow for these plans to be good for ten years. So they have, you know, it's not like the seven years is some magical number. So we certainly hope they'll, they'll be flexible and happen.
It's, it's generally, um, that they, the intent of the, um, changes is to not make it so, um, dependent on consultants. You know, to make it more manageable for, for staff to do in town. So I think, I think it's a very good step forward. Um, and so I think the cost to us would be lower if we can get an extension with the new workbook.
Yeah. Yeah, we certainly would have no, and, you know, no interest in. Yeah, we certainly would have no, and, you know, no interest in signing a contract with a consultant based on the scope that we prepared. Now that the state is, is changing the rules, so it's a recurring theme. Uh, the MMA Legislative Breakfast Meeting, I had been signed up, but I ended up not going, cause I have some deadlines I was working on and, but you were there.
Yeah, I was there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, anything interesting?
Uh, there was um, uh, nothing or a shadow, you know, they talked about their. You know, so there's their legislative agenda. Um, we talked about the um, high reboot meeting um. Issue and their, you know, their effort to get that extended, which of course has now been done. Um, and uh, or I think it's almost completely done. I think just the Senate's supposed to vote on it today and then the government.
They did, yeah, yeah.
They did, the amended, the House voted for the amendments. Um, which removed COVID language for all kinds of purposes and they sent it for government's best increase. Yeah, and and then there was, you know, discussion of school funding and the difficulty for um. You know, for districts and and, you know, communities in general that are larger than communities and acknowledgement of the um. Relatively lightweight that we carry because, you know, we're small communities and. And as opposed to uh, you know, cities that um, that have a lot more legislative structure than. Well, um, aside from that, I, you know, I don't have any specific takeaways that I recall and and. And there wasn't an answer to, you know, the issue of school funding, it wasn't as though there was, you know, an answer to the problem. I don't know if Rebecca had any other thoughts.
Uh, you, you know, she provided the handout that I put into the, in the packet, we talked it through a bit, uh, but there wasn't anything. Yeah, kind of worth shattering, yeah. Uh, next item, uh, as with every year, uh Jenny and I put in our inputs to the water budgeting process. I've included those just so you have them, I think you've previously gotten by email when I sent them around, but, you know, there's quite a bit embedded in there. Uh, it's not on really for discussion or action, but uh if there is anything that you wanna, you know, kind of drill down on, we could either talk about that tonight. Put that on for a future agenda. Obviously, we're putting a lot of thought in direct process this year. There's some continued, you know, additional things even beyond that, that might warrant further discussions, such as the main street solar credits and.
Yeah, that was a good addition, right?
Yeah.
Researchers and are they, yeah.
Yeah, and that eighteen percent is right in the contract documents for the main street solar, you know.
Well, it's in the uh, what's called schedules.
Yeah, yeah.
For, which is an agreement or it's, we, we, we allocate that to the utility, we tell them what the allocation's supposed to be. But it's, you know, when the system was originally sized. The sizing considered all electrical usage by municipal accounts, including the water department. And then at the end, um, after the system was built, I had to figure out what the allocation was supposed to be and. Um, so somebody from AMORSCO did the work, you know, reviewed the accounts, um, I was in part of that process and and uh. And I think since then it was revised once, I know Wayne revised that um, uh, maybe three years ago, three to four years ago. Um, he was involved, well, he was involved with that, we started to call. We need to, that needs to be reworked again, which is.
The schedules.
Yeah, which is what I've been working with Kate, we're talking about Kate about, so.
So, so what are departments that pays by any of this, are they on board with it or what's the?
Uh, you know, I was at their meeting, Rick was there, Rob, uh, and also uh Jack Haley was sitting in. Uh, just to kind of get a, get a flavor of of what goes on at those meetings. Um, it was a pretty uh non, you know, dramatic meeting. Um, there wasn't any real discussion of the materials I'd sent around, so and the. Budget document that was handed out that morning by, by water staff reflected the numbers I had sent. Uh, so if there was discussion that went on outside of the meeting, you know, I wouldn't know about that, but within the meeting it was uh.
Okay, so no surprises.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they typically don't put materials until half the meeting, so I, I noticed they posted this in that item for their meeting next week.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know Jenny met with Jody earlier today on the water budget, because uh they've been working to to kind of refine. Some of the uh wage budgeting numbers and I haven't had a chance to get a briefing from Jenny on exactly what they. Uh, covered, but I think that the intent is for Tuesday, the Water Commission to endorse its budget, which would then uh go to FinCom select board for April third. And uh in terms of other updates, I included that HCD thing just cause it's kind of so silly.
I, I even wrote general useless information.
Absolutely useless, but I, I shared it because it's like. Apparently that is what keeps these state officials busy, it's just that the email saying. Here's an email that say, we'll send you an email, great, thanks, so we could use the time. But a couple of other brief updates, uh as you know, we're uh putting out our, our P for auditors. Uh, we've had uh informational meetings with two prospective auditors, both of whom are expected to put in proposals. Uh, we expect to receive those on or before uh April first. Uh, the intent of that uh timeline is to give us a budget number. Uh, I don't wanna rush the process and I'm not at all looking for April third for this board to conduct interviews, I would anticipate that for April seventeenth. Uh, but, but once we have both budget numbers, that'll give us a number we can settle on to uh. Uh, update the proposed uh finance department budget uh as, as may be needed. So. Uh, I've been part of those discussions along with Caitlin Parker, uh Jenny has intentionally not, because she really wants to keep herself. Uh, arms length from any uh, you know, product selection. Uh, went to the uh municipal aggregation luncheon learned last Thursday, thought it was very, very good, uh people got their questions answered. Uh, you know, good attendance and I was always, the food was excellent and uh finally.
Were, were there many questions?
Uh, there were, yeah, probably twenty.
Yeah, questions.
We posted the um, meeting online as well.
The video from it.
And sent out, um, kind of, this is the last day to, to opt out, here's the video of your fellow residents' questions. If you have any, please contact us, we haven't received anything. Like the general questions of like, what is this thing, why, why are we doing this? Uh, aside from that, there was no pointed questions or follow-up from the meeting.
That was good, it's good, very, very good event, I thought. And then finally, uh Route one thirteen T E C, I did, uh, I was in touch with Kevin Dandridge yesterday, I had sent him the same. Information I sent you re- regarding the federal uh policy, just to say, hey, have I got this about right and. Um, uh, you know, he, he generally, uh, you know, he's, he names so specific programs that. As far as he can tell, are, are basically gonna be totally defunded, including among other things, just the Safe Streets for All, which as you know, MBPC had done that. Regional study, so there are definitely some things that are, you know, it, it's just the, the pipeline's gonna dry up, uh but more, more. Relevant, short term, uh he said they're uh right on the cusp of finishing up the two project need forms. Uh, so he said he, he should be able to send those out to us in the next couple of days for review. So once we get those, I'll review those with staff and once we feel they're in good shape, we'll bring them to this board to, to uh review our future meeting.
Very remarkable, it looks like um, uh, any, any acknowledgement or attempts to improve safety for bicyclists. Um, this is apparently based on, was it there or was it, there was uh something from a.
Marquee as well.
Yeah, from Marquee, I guess it was a photo from Marquee, yeah. That's pretty much out the window, yeah.
Bicycles are expendable, there's millions of them.
That's right. Yeah, it's just people. So you don't wreck a car.
That's what I've got.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I M C department updates, um, we have a letter here about um Jacob Blatchford, congratulations, James.
Thank you. We have to like balance right now. We have one on right now.
So for those not reading the packet, our town clerk um had just received his certification as a Massachusetts municipal clerk. So, at the forty.
Yeah, and uh, this, it's very easy to remember.
Team out of three hundred and one town clerks are certified.
So are you going to the conference implement to get your?
So, a question for him, I guess, yeah.
Just curious. Okay.
With security gen just.
Alright, I M D Board Commission Committee updates. First is all upcoming, there was one Tuesday, the public hearings regarding the M T of communities.
It was not meaningful, nothing to mention.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so I, I understand they're planning for the forum that we speak, so.
Protective glass and all kinds of stuff. What's your date for that again?
Yeah, April fifteenth.
I mean, that's to be sarcastic, everybody watched it, they should know it was a, a fairly intense and heated discussions, yeah, so. Not traditionally what we see.
Do we have, um, what the, if you pull up the scorecard later, uh which date uh. For the board, it's, it's in the packet tonight, uh, do we have for them to vote their recommendation on the uh?
I thought it was the twenty seventh.
It might, it probably is, cause that's when we had a lot of the other biologists. So there will be more, you know, more detailed discussion on this and and that's also one that FinCom wanted to. Uh, take a position on. Yeah, here it is, every day, yeah, it's on for next, next Thursday's agenda.
Um, then there's also gonna be a public hearing on the um, A D U.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the date on that?
I think it's April first, yeah. And uh Sam told us uh at a recent staff puddle that the state has uh. I, and I, I didn't write down my notes clearly, it's either the state either has recently issued guidelines on ADUs or or was about to issue guidelines. But he's tracking that, so uh he'll be at next Thursday's meeting for the Special Services Budget and some of the other biologists, so. If we have questions on the A D U next Thursday, would be a good time to, to ask about that, at the state policy anyway. Or the local amendments.
Alright, I M B is the draft scope and timeline for the feasibility study for the library. Um, so this is something that I drafted to, I mean, I think we had talked about establishing a working group rather than jumping right into feasibility study. Um, so I presented this at the Board of Trustees Library Meeting um last week and they're in favor of it and they did assign two members. So I would just be looking for your input on this draft as well as we should decide which of us will represent the select. The intent is to come up with a scope to um, to have on the, a fall town meeting.
Um, as far as the membership, the only thing, would it not be a good idea to have one at large member from the public? If somebody was interested, wasn't affiliated with one of these groups.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it at seven, just so that it's not, it's eight now with Angus. Well, he, he may or may not be able to attend all meetings, but one, either Angus or one of the selectmen will be there.
But just in general, we've done committees in the past, you know, there's curious residents who. You have to be affiliated somewhere, you don't get the opportunity to have that input, so it might be.
So would we, the one member of the planning board, we were talking about Ray Cook, because he lives right next to the lake library, so. Um, but I can change that to be an at-large number, do you think that's better than the planning board? Or do you, do you agree with these designations, you just wanna add an at-large number?
If I put the committee together, I would have had an at-large opportunity.
Oh, we can, we can make that change, is this still draft? What do you think, Larry?
Yeah, I think an at-large would make sense, um, I, I noticed there wasn't one there too, but I won't be on the board, so.
You could be the at-large then.
I'd have to be appointed.
One thing, I don't know if the management's thinking on this has changed, but, but I think back to three or four years ago with the Millponds All, All Access Trail. They specifically did not wanna be part of that, because they said it might come before the site plan review, so. I, I don't know if uh they would even wanna have someone on there if it's something that, that could be a future permitting issue.
So why don't we change that to the planning board member to an at-large, do you think that makes sense?
I think it makes a lot of sense, yeah. And as, as it notes in there, these would be posted public meetings and uh I'm, I'm sure that planning board members as well as Ray as a. Director of Butter will probably go to the meetings anyway, so.
I wondered about that as a conflict too.
Right, yeah, I was wondering.
I, I think it's a, I think it'd be a, a concern.
Yeah, any other thoughts on the schedule or? The charge for this group, I think probably you have four or five meetings, I don't think it's gonna be. A weekly thing.
Sounds reasonable, Mick.
Alright, Krista, you're interested or is it maybe you do it?
Not really interested, okay. I hate always putting more stuff on you, so.
Well, I was, I was assuming I would do it and given that.
Thank you.
We, we don't need to vote, do we?
It's unanimous if we do.
Alright. Alright, moving on. Action items, I'm trying to keep track of how long things take. Okay, um, item A, request for appointing to the Housing Authority for Dick Cushing.
So I mentioned six o'clock, so he may be monitoring him then.
Oh, he's, he's planning coming, what about Adrian?
Uh, he is unable to make the meeting.
Okay.
He said he's comfortable moving to the next.
Alright, so we'll just skip ahead to I M B then, request for appointing to the Historic District Commission.
Well, that's Adrian, that's Adrian, to put to the next meeting.
Oh.
Oh, here's, oh, here's the job, here's Dick.
So he wants to be on this meeting or?
Yeah, he, he said he's unable to make it and he said it's not.
So for me, I'll make a motion to appoint uh. Historic District Commission for return to.
Well, it's just, it's, it'll be on the way, you are sent. Yeah, yeah.
They have some motion.
Yep.
Give me a second, Mr. Eric. Alright, all in favor, I don't know, what was the term, I didn't hear that. Oh, just. Right, alright, I M A, request for appointing to the Housing Committee, Dick Cushing. Are you? So this is the resident position, is that right?
It, it's a position, uh, well, I, maybe somebody can bring me up to speed on. Uh, it, uh, it's, it's an appointment by the, by the town, the town manager and the board. Uh, a, a resident of, of the, of the, of the, the whole deal, uh. Or just a citizen from the street, or just can, can somebody have?
Yeah, it's a resident specific.
Okay, thank you.
You already got the official shirts on how we say no.
So Dick, you're, you're a resident of housing now?
Yeah, 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 I was here about three years at Christmas.
I still see you out walking the streets, so I figured you were still living towards the center of town, you know.
Well, you know, you know, life, life moves on and uh, thank goodness the housing was here.
Yeah, it's great.
Everything has worked out very well, uh perfectly and uh the new report prior, you know, Tracy and so on, they. They're on the world.
Hey, so I was wondering when, uh, if can I, okay, if I.
Is it, does it relate to that?
It, it, it does, yeah. So, you know, you listed your creds and you didn't even say you've been on the select, with the Board of Selectment at that point. Was it, was it that bad?
Possible deniability.
Yeah, yeah, fourth, fourth, fourth term, fourth goes. And uh.
Alright.
Make a motion to appoint Dick Cushing to the Housing Commission for a term to run through, uh.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Okay, man.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Reverend, and I'll see you in residence in there one of these days, I welcome you to the university.
You having a party, is that what you're saying, Derek?
Well, Wendy, maybe twenty-five.
Maybe ten.
Thanks.
Thanks, easy, Dick.
Alright, I M C, request for nomination of Inspector of Animals, Taylor Furniture and Michelle Carson.
It's that time of year again.
So can you refresh us on what this position entails or?
Uh, it, I know it involves uh reviewing barns and uh, uh for required reporting to the state. Uh, I don't know, Dwyer, do you wanna?
It's regular, it's, it's annual inspection of the barns and, yeah.
So every barn?
I, from what I understand, anything that meets the criteria, and I don't know specifically what that is, but.
Okay.
What are they reviewing for, that's conditions?
Looks like communicable diseases, is the kind of.
Okay, so it's not compliant with zoning or anything like that?
No, I think, would that be the billing inspector, if there was a zoning question?
If there was a zoning question, although a pre-existing non-conformity.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
I believe our zoning.
It has a number of animals, it's a.
You have to have two acres to have so many heads, and then a half acre for each additional.
Okay.
And when I'm out walking around, there's some places that it's just very sad how many animals are stuffed on a tiny property.
Oh, boy.
And I wonder who's monitoring that, I don't think anybody has, so.
I think if, yeah, we have, you know, kind of faith in Kayla, she's done a great job, so I think if there's things that, while she's out there, we'd like her to look for, even if it's not her jurisdiction to do anything about it, she could certainly communicate that back to the chief, and he's in touch with Sam all the time, so I think. That would be totally helpful if she's her boots on the ground.
I wonder if she monitors things like, you know, grain being, you know, trying to prevent easy pickings or rats and things like that.
Yeah, I looked up the, this citation somewhere in there, and I looked up the regs on it, and that's one of the things, yeah.
She's always been very happy to come meet with anybody at any time, including the board, so I'm happy to arrange that with the thanks that that was.
Yeah.
I just make a notation too, on the, Michelle Parsons, obviously knew the previous person, is listed on the form still, and the form is kind of messy. It says email, should be crossed out, but yeah, G Coxwell, so the disintegrated person, Michelle.
I assume so, do you know, Chief?
Yeah, Rebecca was in touch with, with new report on this, and it's, I believe it's a newer hire, who's their assistant.
Yeah, so on your form, it's, on ours, it shows prior email of this Glenn Cox.
Oh, okay, it must have gotten scanned, because I caught that when I was reviewing this, and Rebecca made the changes, so it must have been.
There's a blank space in there between new report nomination, there are stuff that is on our form that says, which is not relevant, okay.
Okay, so that must have been.
All right.
I'm sure, but yeah, what kind of?
Motion?
So, so it has, it has Coxwell seen now, and is it crossed out?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
It's on the next page, if you, if you go maybe to the next, oh, yeah, there were two forms.
Yeah, yeah, one for, one for Kayla.
Who's got a different? Yeah, right there, yeah, and there it says, yeah, Glenn Cox, oh, that is.
Different form, we've got a different one in the packet.
Yeah, actually, the name is crossed out here, but the email address still says G Coxwell, and what we, oh, yeah, it looks like somebody, see how the new report masses kind of cut off, looks like somebody put a white something over it, yeah. Okay.
That's a redacted version, so Max probably redacted it.
Okay, okay, good, see, redacted the address, it no longer, so that's good.
All right.
We'll make a motion to appoint Kayla Provence, Michelle Parsons, Inspector of Animals.
All right. That's one year, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, item D, request for appointment of full-time officer, Nicholas Daly.
So I'm excited to introduce Nick to the board, he came highly recommended to our department, he did quite well through the process, and my appointment request is really to get him into the academy in June. And have him ready to go for, you know, training locally in November, we have Sergeant Johnson, who's going to be retiring in August, so he's going to be filling that position, that's going to then be one of the. We're really excited, like I said, he's scored really well through our process, all of his recommendations were stellar, local kids enroll them, like I'm talking, so it's really, he'll be a great fit for us, he's. Really excited, motivated to start, little nervous about being here tonight, but I gave him a nice little pep talk, walking in.
We're actually.
He's got some family.
We generally try to be two out of three, isn't that right?
Any questions for Nick?
He did pass that, I saw that, I read that. I have a question for Mike, not sure, for Nick. The whole police process, unless you get an officer from another department that's already certified, they go through the academy at the town's expense. There is no commitment or obligation for them to stay, is there, it seems to me we have a lot that come through, and then. You want them to hang around, right?
So we have a great working environment, we have a great group of officers that train, we obviously have Megan, who just graduated the academy now, and she's going through the field training program. You're right, it's, it used to be we could have reserves and a whole list of them that weren't necessarily working in the field, but wanted to get a full-time job. For those of you familiar with civil service, it was similar to that, we would have our own list of people, we had a lot of them, we could train them, and we could, you know, work through the process to see who was going to be really good. And then they would be next in line for our next available positions, now, the position is so marketable, when you have an academy, I mean, I have an academy cert, I could get a full-time job elsewhere, so it's, it's. Things have changed dramatically with the post reform, where before, we could count on people who wanted to stay local that were local, that wanted to wait for that next position, which could be years, years after. And all the other departments are experiencing the same, same sort of rates, but we have a great group of officers, and he's going to fit right in with us. It's going to be a training process, he's, he's going to learn it all, and then he's going to need to train locally with us, so that does take time, but my hope is that his commitment is a long prosperous time here in West Newbury. Being the leader when all of us leaders retire.
Yeah, we hope you enjoy it here, hang around for a long time.
How did you like working in Merrimack?
It was, it was great, I learned more than I've ever learned about policing through my whole life, it was hands-on, bunch of, we did a bunch of different trainings and all that, and it was very, more information than I could ever imagine.
Yeah, it sounds like it wasn't just like paperwork in the office, and I went around the office.
It was a lot of hands-on, face-to-face work, which is, in my opinion, better than just hanging around in your office.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, participated in some active shooter training. Yeah, so.
Right. Do you have any questions for us?
No, not at the moment, no.
Right.
Great.
Okay.
Now, I'll make a motion though, for, move that we appoint Nicholas Daly. As a full-time police officer for West Newbury, I guess that would be, so, terms here always end June thirtieth, so. When I say June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, it doesn't mean that you pay your short time, it just means that every year, there's reappointment on June seventh, on June third, or the term ends June thirtieth, and you have to be reappointed.
So procedurally, every year, on the office, when the chief brings forward a list to the board, typically in the first or second meeting in June, and they vote the reappointment of officers for the subsequent fiscal year.
I'll second Rick's motion.
All right, any other discussion, in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, good luck.
I'll introduce your former chair, when you read. Nice to meet you.
You too.
Chris Wild.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much, Tom Ferguson, I guess.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Great.
Should we wait on the next item?
What is the next item? Oh, no, I can.
All right, request for appointment of reserve officer.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Edin, I don't know how to pronounce the last. Okay.
It's Phil. I'll make a motion to reappoint Edward Pranolik as a reserve officer, I assume for a term through June.
Not reappointed.
He was with us, and then he stepped down, and I always come back.
Okay, so, okay, so I make an appointment. Till June thirtieth? I'll second, and I have one question about, so, in your letter, Mike, it says, part-time officer, as opposed to, what is the correct term, is it part-time or reserve?
I was, I was confused, but I mean, it's reserve, part-time.
Yeah, okay.
Sort of the same. It's my old, old memory catching up with the new times.
So, so he's filling in, he's not really part of the rotation, or?
So he'll be, he'll be, he'll be filling in open shifts, yeah.
And how many hours a week do you generally get?
So, he, he's given us a great commitment in the past, he left because of just work, work things that he, he works at Boston University, he, but I have been focusing more on. The commitment of trying to get two shifts through a payroll cycle at minimum, you know, majority of our reserves are working as many shifts as they can, that work around their own full-time work schedules, family schedules, that's. But that's one thing that I took into account with Edin, he's, he's pretty reliable, of course, even if it's filling in for half a shift, we'll take that, it's better than nothing.
Okay.
Excellent.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. All right, item A, proposed amendments to traffic rules and orders.
So one thing, just to clarify the materials, that Farm Lane, you already voted that, so it shows in red line, because just to show kind of what the language that you previously voted is, but that's not before you tonight, it was before you, it's the Coffin Street heavy vehicle exclusion.
And we're.
Oh, wait, what did I say? Yes, exactly, yeah.
So Jim, I was a little bit confused about the process. Hold a meeting. And then vote?
Yep. Well, you're holding a meeting now.
Yeah.
So, a posted meeting, it's not a public hearing, that's the major difference, is that it doesn't need to be a public hearing, it's, you need to actually meet and vote.
So even though we voted to refer this to D O T, that's not the same thing, is?
You're essentially accepting.
Their decision.
Their decision, and enforcing it.
So, Mike, any thoughts on what is involved in enforcing this, given that heavy vehicles are allowed, if they have business on Coffin Street and River Road?
Coffin River Road, so, so what we would be able to do is we would be able to enforce if they're over limit, so we would be able to make that stop, and we'd confirm with commercial vehicle what they're, what they're rated at for weight. We would be able to communicate with the operator to determine if they were back making a delivery. That's about the enforcement end of it, other than the regular rules of the road, if you're speeding or anything like that, we'd be able to enforce those.
What, I know there was some discussion when we were going over the material that was going to be sent to MassDOT, and. Question is to exactly what heavy commercial vehicle meant, and I think, you know, it was just five thousand pounds was, I think, two and a half tons or five thousand, I don't recall how it was referenced, and, and I thought that was the carrying, the load capacity of the vehicle. As opposed to like the grocery vehicle weight, and is that correct, or, and, and so that would be information that's on registrations, correct?
Correct, that's what we would reference.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's actually, I cited that at the bottom.
Oh, you did.
Heavy traffic, traffic and orders, so that's actually.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't see that, thanks.
Two point four five tons is anything over is.
As I was racing through this, I thought I was down with the page, and I probably just blew right by that. I did, I did, only because.
Yeah, no, it's good, it's good.
No one's going to know what it is without having to look it up, so it's just a put there.
This is not the commercial motor vehicle, the ten thousand pounds, this is something different, this is not the gross motor vehicle weight, you have a D O T sticker if you're over ten thousand.
Yeah, so we would be referencing their, what their vehicle weight would be, and that's when we make the determination on if they're violating law. Because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to use the scale per se to measure their weight at that time.
No, there's a, there's a, there's a capacity, isn't there, with a commercial vehicle, don't they have a load capacity that they can?
Maybe not. Maximum capacity could be here.
Right, like. I thought there was a rated load capacity for the vehicle, not a, you know, not the G V, was it G V W R, right, that was grocery weight. Not that, because that's, because this was pointed out in there, in the original discussion, you could take a, you know, Tesla Cybertruck, and that weighs over two and a half tons, because, you know. Four thousand pounds, which is probably a battery. So, yeah, I just wanted to understand exactly.
Yeah, I still don't understand, to be honest, I don't.
And that's what we do for enforcement on ASH, is we go by what they're, what they're rated for.
But it's the carrying capacity of the vehicle, it's not the weight of the vehicle.
On ASH, it's the weight of the vehicle, it's a five ton, yeah.
Yeah, this is different.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so MassDOT, MassDOT referenced heavy commercial vehicle in their letter, right, I'm pretty sure it's in the letter, so clearly there's a designation that, I mean, they wouldn't have just made up a term.
No, but if we're going to enforce it, we need.
Yeah, exactly.
What even says two and a half ton capacity right now, Larry?
Yeah, so that's why I was saying that my interpretation of that is it's the load capacity of the vehicle.
Not the gross.
Yeah, not the grocery of a weight, but the load capacity, and the two are related, you know, they correlate with each other.
Well, but it leads me to the question, if you have a vehicle with a two and a half ton load capacity, but they're empty, they're technically in violation, correct?
Right, well, I believe there's a breakdown, again, we're not, we're not trained in commercial vehicle enforcement, other than sort of the rules of the road, but I believe, and I can give clarification on this, that there shows both what their regular weight is, and what their maximum weight would be. But we're not going to be able to get too far into that, I mean, for instance, Ash Street, we spend a lot more time educating them and not taking that path, and then if they continue to do it, then we provide them with a citation, and then that.
You could buy them the citation.
Yeah.
That's a nice way of phrasing it.
And then it becomes, you know, a matter of debate if they have filled in court, okay?
So this is something on the registration, this?
I believe there's two, it shows loaded and unloaded.
All right.
And similar to the bridge, you know, we usually, it's pretty clear that what they're doing is in violation of law, when it comes down to weight, that's a little different, if it's a dump truck.
Yeah, but if it's based on vehicle classification, then it should be on registration.
All right.
It's similar to when we started having enforcement issues at ASH, and also at the Bridge, State Police also provide us with support to sort of work through some of those details that we're not up to.
See, town with on the signage, correct?
Sure.
We need a motion, or?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Do it?
No, I'll do it.
Because they did, all their, was involved.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so I moved. That we. Move for, I guess, adopt, accept the revised legal policy.
Based on the mass D O T's recommendation?
Well, actually. I guess, yeah, we have to accept their letter, yes, based on, okay, just as you said, Chris.
I would say their authorization, not, I don't think it's a recommendation.
Yeah, based on their authorization, sounds fine, one second.
Any discussion? I don't think it's necessary, and I think it's going to be, you know, pretty difficult to enforce, I'm still not. Appreciate all the work that was.
And again, I agree with you the first time, if they ask D O T approval, at this point, I'm not going to say no.
But they're not going to be able to enforce it, though, you know.
Maybe just have a signage app, will give you the advantage we need.
All right, in all favor?
All right.
All those. All right.
You didn't want to say on it, you said to me instead.
Yeah. I M G, yeah, I'm Vanessa, request to endorse every grain farm conservation restriction, we vote. So this has gone through COMCOM, correct? That's all, we're all done, this is the last time you're going to, I'm sure you're just as weary of reviewing, yeah, all right, any questions for Vanessa?
No.
Okay.
You've already asked my question, we should, so we're really done.
Chris? Chris?
Not a question, more of a statement. And I feel, um, a little remiss, but once, it was a process that went more through the Conservation Commission than us. And we looked at it and said, keep going. And then to realize at the end that on the parcel with the restriction, we don't have the opportunity for any trails or anything there, is my understanding.
Um, that's correct, although the, uh, well, I mean, you don't have any, there isn't the right for us to establish trails, but we do have the right to hold, and I cannot restriction in front of me, is it two or four guided walks a year? On the property?
I know, but it'd be kinda nice to be able to cut from Ash Street across and through. I just feel that, um, I'll say it for myself, a little negligent when we started on the process. I wished I'd have looked at it a little harder and thought about having trails in there for spending money to acquire restrictions for the town, so.
I, I mean, don't you think this is similar to Brown Spring Farm, though? I mean, we wouldn't, we didn't think we should have a trail for there and that was.
I don't see the advantage of a trail of Brown Spring Farm, so.
I'm just saying that's an agricultural restriction as is this.
I know, again, I just think we could have gotten a, a slight bit more benefit with a trail through there, it connects with a lot of other parcels.
Yeah.
This is surrounded, almost surrounded, but it is surrounded and soon to be completely surrounded. It's surrounded on two sides, soon to be surrounded on three sides by land owned by the Department of Fishing Game, which is publicly accessible anytime. So, um.
Well, I'm saying it'd be nice when you go down there, there's that little roadway on the backside, to be able to cut up through there and cross. We don't have the authority or the right to technically do that, so.
But you can get on fishing game land from ASH.
I know, it would just be nice to connect through this property and I, I think that I personally will look at properties like this little, that lends a little more in the future, that's all. It just felt a little twinge when I realized we didn't have any trail access through, so. It's still, it's still a great thing to acquire, uh, in the fashion, don't get me wrong.
So, so you know there's a trail that he said it would be nice to be able to go through, sounds like you've been through there before. So, don't want your distress pass again.
It's easy in the winter, you know, it's easier.
Any further?
Uh, just, when, when, when will we get the exhibits, like the temporary pardon era, is that something we get after it's executed? There's, there was nothing that was attached to the.
Well, there wasn't?
No.
Yeah, because that's complete, so I can, I mean, I guess I'll send that after the pack, but, um, if you're willing to sign tonight, but we have all those. I apologize, that should have been included.
Well, is anybody concerned about not having exhibits in there before we?
I'm not.
Okay. Motion?
Um, sure, I moved, we, uh, um, put the conservation restriction on the Evergreen Farm property in next year.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Can I ask Vanessa a question?
Sure.
Um, is there, he just, you know, Chris asked about trail, like there are. Um, you know, being involved with, uh, you know, land conservation and, and haven't been at it for a while. Do you know what the rules are regarding posting of land and, and, um, access to land that is posted or is not posted?
Meaning if the land is privately owned and posted?
Yeah, if the land is privately owned and not posted.
Oh, and not, I'm, I'm, in terms of regular public access, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Set your own peril.
I mean, that, the landowners at Evergreen Farm can certainly allow public access.
Right.
It's just not allowed by virtue of the conservation.
Understood, yeah, yeah. It, it just is a conversation, I think we've had for Angus, I don't remember where, but I think we talked about it relative to another property at some point, um, and I was just curious what the general rule is. Because there probably is a state rule, you know, regarding, you know, how close together posted signs have to be and stuff like that. Um, but that's okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you able to sign in?
Sure, we've got here it now, right here, yeah.
So, I'm just moving over, right, if Chris on, um, skipping that or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanna detach on it and then, but yeah, I would, I would recommend passing over it, but, but if we wanna touch on it a little bit, uh, it's up to you. We're, we're ahead of schedule where I thought we would be at this point.
Oh, are these red numbers yours?
Uh, Rebecca.
Oh.
Yeah, I've got the same numbers here.
I did mine on.
Statement of assurance.
That happened with Black then, on blue. Just one page? All right, thanks Vanessa.
You're welcome.
Thanks Vanessa, great.
Good thing.
Yeah, thanks for hanging in there, Angus.
Absolutely, thank you for hanging in there.
All right, so the special event permits, we're gonna, uh, delay till the next meeting?
No.
No?
Might just comment, we can delay them, I just wanna comment on the the documentation, I think it's lacking.
So that's, that's why they're, we're delaying, so we're gonna do some more.
No, but I think it should be noted.
Okay.
I mean, I, I spent the time to go through them all. Just frustrating. Yeah, this sloppy presentation.
So I, I think, what I said to Angus is I think we need to do some work on the application so that it's clear and somebody needs to make sure that it's complete before it comes to the board. I feel like it should be like a rubber stamp, it shouldn't be like us pointing out what's missing, so Angus agrees and has been working on that, but, um, let's put more pressure.
Yeah.
And if they're gonna be updating the form, I think there ought to be a, a last page, which would be a, um, a follow-up or forensic on how the event went, so that we can track them from year to year.
Okay, that's, that's an interesting thought, I mean, the one thing I wanna add is the, um, Amy that was in talking about her concerns, I wanna have something in there that says specifically how far in advance the signage goes up and how that, so.
And what it should look like, too.
Yeah.
I mean, um, it says it can't be on, you know, poles and trees, so it's gotta be, you know, eighteen by twenty-four in the state caning ground, in so many hours in advance and then we'll, you know, it should be very clear, this is what is expected.
Yeah.
We've been fortunate that people generally follow that, but it, it's not their fault that they don't know what they're looking through, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, all that's relevant.
Again, there were, there were comments like, police chief will coordinate with organizers for police detail, I don't even know what that means. I mean, that's a kind of squirrely. If you have police, you're done, and same with some of the maps that are.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my, my thing is that I, I, I really would like it if, with all these things, if there was clarity in the maps and in the directions.
Give it the Google map with the highlighted red.
Yeah, um, you know, for the, um, the LS group ride, um, which, you know, is a great thing, but they don't even mention that when you enter West Newbury, you don't enter on, um, on, on East Main Street. You actually cross the Rocksville Bridge initially reference that, because that's part of, that's part of the route and that's actually the entry into West Newbury.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and then also the maps, although, well, the maps are all identical. The, the routes are, one is a marathon, one's a half marathon, and a, and a, and a five K, you know, they're, they're all described differently, but they all use exactly the same map. None of them is marathon length. You know, the map that's shown is, is a half marathon and, and so it would just for accuracy of, so we know what actually is happening, what the event really is, it should say that, you know, they should show what it is.
Yeah, and it should be up there with, and not just use the same map.
Correct, yeah.
But I think we have part of the responsibility, because we keep just shuffling these through.
Yeah.
Because it takes a lot of time to stop and make it right, so that's why we're pausing that.
Yeah, we're not at the point of shuffling through.
Yeah.
Another common one on the thing, it says event date, and I think I mentioned to Angus, we have to make sure there aren't two events on the same day conflicting, and so it should be verified that this date is open and acceptable, too, not just that this is the date they want, right? So.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, too, because, for instance, although it's supposed to be a one-day event, when the, the culverts are, each is supposed to be a one-day event, but when the culverts are being replaced on Coffin Street, this, the bike route follows, you know, goes River Road and Coffin Street.
That makes it more exciting.
So we just.
It's a venture, right?
People takes.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, there's a, there's a potential, unlikely, because, you know, which expects it to be a day of, of road closure, but you know, things happen and, so we should make sure that they understand or that, you know, that there's some coordination there.
And, and, gonna keep beating the dead horse, I gather. They talk road closures and the permits we've approved in the past say no. But we had the lady coming and was talking about, what street was that?
Brown Street.
Oh.
Yeah. They didn't close the street, but they put the order Johns on one side, the aid station on the other, and people threw it so that the neighbors couldn't get in and out. She was irritated and justified it, so. And then there was the race, even have the date, was, where they took part of Middle Street and they put cones in the middle of the driving lane. So that the runners could stay in the protective, so if cars came one way, they other, somebody's getting squeezed out, so. They didn't close the road, but they restricted traffic and that's, that to me is closing the road, should be either not acceptable or addressed in advance, we didn't have any expectation that that was happening that way.
So Angus, is it reasonable to, um, have like a draft updated application for the board to look at to make sure everything we want is included in there before we, you know, send, start using it?
Yeah.
That sound? All right. Thank you, Captain, hello. All right, um, item L, request to affirm the chief assessor's finding, party one shows status. Uh, this is, um, current on mill, yeah?
I thought that we were, we, we are, but yeah, I, I thought, yeah, I, I'm gonna recommend you table it.
Okay.
But I thought since, you know, since it's on.
I'm just, okay.
Yeah, so, so this has been a longstanding issue, uh, you may remember there was some correspondence, I don't honestly remember if it was last January or the January before, but uh, I think what I'm gonna recommend is that we put this on a future agenda. I did get something fairly lengthy today from Christian, I didn't send it out, because I, you know, knew we were gonna pass over this, but uh, it basically documents how he came to his conclusion, and I want you to have that information in front of you, because I'm, I'm gonna be asking you to basically say do you agree or not? And, uh, it's basically to, to help, uh, resolve something that has gone back, I think, at least fifteen years, where the state is basically asserting that a, you know, property owner owns this and a subject dam, um, uh, inspections and a few doesn't comply with thousands of dollars of fines, it's a very, very complex, messy issue, so given the length of tonight's agenda, uh, I think it makes sense to pass that over and I, I can include, uh, Christian's narrative in the, uh, in a packet when, when it does come up, whether that's next week or a couple of weeks or April seventeenth, is, is probably better, because once we get past, uh.
So with Christian, will you give us a presentation on it, the packet is fairly demanding?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah, I can arrange for that, and, and I think the, the, um, the person would, would, I think, be happy to be here as well to kind of, you know, represent his own point of view on this, but I was part of a meeting out there some time ago with, uh, you know, with Representative Newberryport and uh, part of why, when I did get the recent correspondence, I, uh, you know, I knew tonight was gonna be quick, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, trying to get something before the board, but at that time, we had anticipated that the Mass Office of Dam Safety was gonna have their consultant, Fuss O'Neil, out on site either today or tomorrow, so for that reason, it seemed timely to try to like, kind of get to you. Uh, but I reached out to the, uh, to Richard earlier this week and he got back to me. Uh, and he had not heard from Fuss O'Neil and O'Neil, they, they had never confirmed. And then he finally did hear from them, I think it was yesterday, I heard from him that that's not gonna happen till now in April. Uh, so that was part of why I said, let's just like push this off, because there's no, um, you know, that's, that's pushed back a bit. So I, I think Bush and I would like to be part of that onsite meeting, and it really comes down to who owns not just the bridge, but the, uh, apartments and the, the dam and, uh, it's a, it's a very, very messy situation. And to be honest, the way we left it with the mayor's office quite a while ago was that even though the, the person does own property in both communities, they are residents of Newburyport, and we were very clear with the mayor's chief of staff, who was on, at the site visit, that we really felt we had done our part, our staff had done our part, we were not inclined to send this to our town council, they really needed to send it their city solicitor to get an opinion so that the, the city of Newburyport can take a position on this, and my advice to, you know, to the resident was you should really continue with this. The mayor's office or Wayne's office or whomever, because that's really, you know, I, I kind of feel like we've done what we could, but at the same time, I do think it would be probably not unhelpful at some point for this board to, to say, do you agree with Christian, do you not? It's not like legally binding, but I think, uh, that might lend, if you do agree, it might lend some further weight to the fact that, uh, you know, it's the Mass Office of Dam Safety seems to have it wrong in terms of who.
The damn mess.
It's a, it's a mess of a dam.
So, the, in the packet, there's a, an analysis of the deed of, uh, City of Newburyport's joby mark on conveying cement portion?
That's from the resident.
Okay, because it does say who it's from.
I know, it was, it was attached to the email, that's why I included the email, because, because, uh, yeah, he didn't put his name on the document, but that's, that's his work product.
Okay.
So I have something that I got from Christian, uh, today, uh, that I'll, I'll put whenever this does come out.
So the consultant will be out there?
Uh, yeah, it was, uh.
The next week?
I think it, I know it was April, uh, let me see if I can.
So, they're, we'll be the weekend, we're not, well.
Uh, yeah, he, he emailed me, he says, I wonder if Wonders just got a call back from Fuss O'Neil, jurisdictional inspection pushed back Wednesday, April second, uh, at a time to be determined, he'll keep us informed, so.
Which is the day before.
Yeah, two, I think, two weeks from yesterday. So I had, uh, yeah, my day is, at this point, pretty flexible, actually, so I, I would hopefully attend.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on that?
Um, no, I, if it was, um, I guess I can always review what's in this packet, quite honestly, I stopped reading it once I got, you know, it's everything I'm gonna pack, and.
Yeah.
But if I, if it was in a single package, if everything was in a single package, a separate email.
Good.
Then I'd focus on getting that done.
Yeah, and I have the earlier letters, they were in a board packet, I, do you remember if it was last January? I feel, I feel like it was January, I don't know why, just time of year, I guess, when I think it was, but uh, I remember when we got it.
I remember.
Didn't really know what to do with it, but we included it for this correspondence, because it was addressed to the board, so, but we really didn't know what to do about it, so. But yeah, what we'll do is we'll put that, former correspondence together with this, together with Christian's, and try to put it in a cohesive.
Great.
Send it around.
Does Tim have to review it at all?
Well, we, we certainly could, but, but again, it's not, I, we could, yeah, I think it would probably be more like Shireman, because I think it's more a real estate matter.
Besides us, because.
It's very complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's calling out the wildfire, oh wait, you know, whoever wrote the letter, you said it was the, the resident, you know?
Yeah. Who, who, by the way, is a retired judge.
You can tell by the way he writes. This land-based thing, the lawyer from the state saying, this is total garbage, so.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get caught in the middle of this big legal.
Yeah, yeah.
Our counsel should say, he agrees with Christian, and you guys can go forward on this, that's all I.
I do remember when it came up last year, uh, and it must have been last year, because I, it was one of the, one of the issues where, as you know, last year was a very, we were really strained under the legal budget, we were dealing with a lot of, a lot of things that were complex and time intensive, and I do remember that being one of my thoughts of why I didn't wanna send it to KP last year, because we were trying to stay within budget, uh, which we, we did end up doing, uh, this year, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're within budget, so I think this would be a better year to get them, especially if it's something that's gonna take them many hours. Because I don't think it's something they're gonna, you know, probably be able to do in an hour, like it's pretty, there's a lot of history there.
I mean, I, I think there's some merit to having Newburyport spend their legal dollars if this guy's not even a resident, right?
Cool, yeah, I think there's a sliver of lands, he's not a resident, there is a sliver of land under his ownership, so, so he does own property in West Newburyport, but yeah, he's a Newburyport resident and I do feel they.
He talks the pebble out of his window in Atlanta, West Newbury.
But yeah, I, I do feel they, you know, he should look to his, you know.
I think he's getting more reception from us.
Yes.
Pressuring us, but at least he should be.
Yeah.
And that's in your email to him.
Yeah.
Somebody's asked about it.
Yeah.
But I think for us to endorse Christians or any of this without having a legal review
Mm-hmm.
from our side would be dangerous, and our side could be Newburyport's counsel, I would have, I'm so dangerous.
Well, there is.
We're trying to assert.
Ownership of infrastructure, so if, if the end, at the end of the day, if the Mass Office of Dam Safety comes to the conclusion it's not his infrastructure, that means it's no.
The we own it, and now we're liable for the fines.
So, you know, whether I use the word dangerous, I, I don't know, but it's certainly getting weighty and certainly got real implications, so it's consequential, uh.
You're making a significant, significant legal, uh, decision that has exposure for the town, and if you're not careful, you could be owning the fines that the state is threatening this owner with, you know, having inspections and everything, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They can't just turn around and say, okay, now we're fining you.
Well, we would just need to do the inspections like we did for the Milpon Dam.
Yeah.
And, and we got a similar letter. And and we got a similar letter from the Mass Office of Dam Safety about five or six years ago threatening. And uh, Wayne was here and we've since put in place a re- a regular inspection process. Uh, Butch is now administering that. We got inspected last year.
Well, it was changing, so it's not.
We also changed.
We could sit there and say, conceptually, we're in agreement with it. Once Newburyport's council reviews it, send that on to our council for review, so we're not doing the full review.
Yeah, that would, I think that's a good move is to, you know, I could reach out to the, to the mayor's office or or through Wayne and. Just uh, you know, lend our voice to to their residents' voice to to say, look, you guys will need to get a legal review. Once you get it, please share it with us and we'd like our council to look, but that's gonna, I think that's much more appropriate.
Yeah.
Uh, rather than our taxpayers, you know, basically.
Right.
Doing their work for them.
Exactly. That sounds good.
Yeah, good. That's a great, great approach. So we will talk about it probably maybe April seventeenth or even beyond that if it's, but. But I I don't think for the next two weeks where you have joint meetings, it's the same time that makes sense to try to shoot on this end.
Agreed.
Good.
Alright, item M, review request to list the West Newbury Energy Region Program on Energy Switch website. I I went on this website. I don't see any towns listed. Do, are you familiar with it, Rick?
I've looked at it before.
I don't know what they want from us. I mean, I.
I know what they're doing is they're just telling you who the alternative sources are.
Find that on the website anywhere.
Well, I think you, um, I did look at it. I don't, I didn't even think about it. About that aspect. I just looked at who was on it and, you know, a little bit of the pricing structures, um, and, you know, the the uh. Uh, requirements, you know, the exit requirements and that kind of stuff, but but um. Uh, you know, I I think what you have to do with any of those companies is reach out to them and they'll tell you, you know, we. We cover you or we don't. Yeah, we cover your community or we don't.
Okay, so what is the, why do they want us to be on them? I feel like it's just a marketing thing and if if West Newbury's gonna be listed to support their. Business, I'd wanna see what, you know, what they're saying.
Yeah.
Is is that your understanding of what this Energy Switch website is?
You know, for us, I I don't think it. I quite honestly, I glanced at that. I mean, I've I've looked, seen that website before. Um, just in passing because I'd seen a reference probably a year or two ago and um. It didn't even occur to me until you just said this now, that there is no other reference to another municipality's aggregation. Apparently DPU just recently um, uh, allowed. Municipal aggregation systems to be posted on there, um, so. When I looked at it, that wasn't what I was looking for. I was just looking to see who else was on there. Um, not whether or not they were affiliated with individual communities, so that's. That's a legitimate question. Um, I don't think there's any. Well, there is no net advantage to us, you know, to the, to the town, um, to the residents of the town. The net advantage is really to Columbia, um, because, you know, they get, you know, point one cents per kilowatt hour. For every kilowatt hour that is um, purchased and and, you know, this is just business. It's not, I'm not holding against them. But they get point one cents per kilowatt hour for every kilowatt hour that goes through West Newbury's municipal aggregation system. So if, you know, if there's another couple of customers or another ten customers and and definitely be that many, but if there were. And, you know, and they sold, you know, they, there was another hundred thousand kilowatt hours a year. That would be another thousand dollars or. Whatever that works out to be, you know, there'd be. Yeah, it'd be another. I don't think just looking to say, hey, West Newbury's a customer. Is there aggregation used for the?
I I'm not clear. I guess that's the thing.
The conversation I had with Denise briefly about it, it was essentially, so you have your choice options now and they're just adding. Them as another choice that if you're going to look for choices, this is one of the choices you have. That's from her description.
It's saying it's a Commonwealth of Massachusetts website.
Yeah, um, what's the name of the site? I I.
It's about Energy Switch Website Mass DPU developer website.
So why is this so time sensitive? I know she's.
I don't know. I mean, to be honest, it came up as you know, and I'm like, look, we.
Yeah.
I don't know why they're pressing me because we got a lot of other things.
So are you both okay if I reach out to Denise and get my questions answered?
Sure, so so I just searched for Energy Switch and um.
Yeah, I I found.
Energy ratings, that's not it, um.
Alright, let's do that. Now, move on.
Sure, thanks.
Oh, you do put in your zip code. That's what it is. You put in your zip code when you enter the site, so that's. So what you get is only the uh, companies that are an option within your community. So they don't have to say it's West Newbury's municipal aggregation because if you put in oh one nine eight five, all you're gonna get is. Things that are relevant to West Newbury. So, and you know, that's just answering that question.
Um, item N, proposed amendments to the indirect cost financial policy.
Uh, so as you know, we, you know, Earl and I talked about the inputs to the water budget, one of which was the indirect costs and uh, as I was writing the transmittal memo. Uh, I put in the language about if you disagree, uh, you know, you can appeal it. And the way it's written is you can appeal it to the town manager who then. And and, right, and so when we put this policy in place back in twenty nineteen, there had not been a written policy. Uh, this was one of the nineteen or so financial policies in the uh, Community Compact Best Practices. Uh, and uh, we worked with the the then board and the uh, Water Commission as well. And basically, uh, you know, we uh. It documented, it documents kind of how it had been done. There just hadn't been a written policy, so I know. You're aware from a discussion we had two or three months ago, there's three or four different acceptable ways to do indirect costs. Uh, with the amendments that are brought forward tonight, I'm not looking to. You know, have that bigger conversation of of, is this the right way to do indirect costs? That's something we could talk about at a future meeting. I more felt that as I was writing that memo, I didn't really feel comfortable. I think when this was written, we had very different staff, very different, you know, uh, it was a different time and uh. The way it's intended is that really the town accountant is calculating that. And so if if that was one hundred percent true. Uh, it would make some sense for the town manager to be the arbiter if there was an appeal. In reality, I work very, very closely with Jenny on this and uh. We don't send the indirect costs uh, until she and I are both comfortable with it. So I think since that is how it's uh, done in practice, I don't feel that I should be the one being the arbiter, so I felt if there was an appeal. It should more properly be sent to the board for your consideration, so uh, that's what I'm trying to get done with this and uh. And, you know, it's, it just came to my mind because I was recently working on this and I said, geez, that's. You know, I remember why we did it the way we did it, but I think for this, for this time, I think that would make more sense.
Any questions or thoughts?
Makes sense.
Yeah. That's great. Alright, so do you want to motion to approve this?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, but just to be clear, there's a couple of minor grammatical errors.
Yeah, 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 correct.
Make a motion to approve the indirect cost allocation as presented. Um, second, but I actually, I I, just looking at my notes here, um, I did have one question. Or or one point, um, and maybe this is relevant and maybe I missed something, uh. Page one six was not a reference salary pay. So there, we've got all these things um. In the middle of page one oh six, policy, um, and uh, talk about the. Violated expenses, you know, the administrative services, then there's, then there's a list of, you know, benefits, pensions. What isn't mentioned anywhere is salary. And I couldn't find a reference to salary, which obviously is the primary part of the the uh. The indirect cost structure.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, but it's not mentioned.
Oh, yeah, so just to add a. Of course, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Kind of implicit, but yeah. And that is obviously a major input. So I think we're changing to add the uh, bullet salary prior to benefits here on the.
Okay, so first.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that's a good change. Thanks, Chris.
We have a discussion on the bayor. Bye.
Thank you.
I was reading.
Alright, moving on to item O, request of review and vote for bylaw amendments. So do you have Lori Kennedy here? With stormwater bylaw. Hi Lori.
Hello.
So uh, we had engaged, of course, we went uh, some time ago for the initial. Adoption of the stormwater bylaw, which goes back to prior to the tenure of, I I think Chris and I think. Prior to maybe prior to your tenure on the board as well, um, it was a requirement of the MS four uh, EPA permit that. Um, that the EP then kind of uh. Uh, manages uh, to have a stormwater bylaw and so we did that uh, as part of a couple of years ago. And when it was done, uh, it was uh, since since it's been in place, there have been. So one significant administrative change, which was really. Uh, it it was written with the planning board as the stormwater uh, permit granting authority. And for a number of reasons, it made more sense in how our organization functions. At the time and and I would say it makes sense true to today for the Board of Health to be the Stormwater Granting Authority. Uh, that was partly based on kind of knowledge. Uh, we are fortunate to have a health agent who's extremely knowledgeable on stormwater and. Lands generally ingrading and erosion and he's, you know, he's very knowledgeable about those issues and. Uh, at the time, uh, you know, the the planner, and this is not a personal thing, but it just wasn't as much like out in the field. You know, plus, the planner is and was a part-time physician, health agent's a full-time physician with. Uh, you know, roughly sixty percent uh, admin support, you know, twenty-four hours a week of admin support. We're back at the time that planning department was a twenty-five hour week town planner with effectively no admin support, so that was a consideration. Uh, was a workload issue and Board of Health and Health Agent were amenable, so the uh, planning board a couple of years ago had. Formally voted to delegate its authority to the Board of Health. The Board of Health voted that they would agree to do that, so since that time, they've been uh, acting as Stormwater Authority and it's worked well. So uh, one of the main changes uh, we proposed with the bylaw amendments is to codify that, kind of make that formal. Uh, there's some other housekeeping changes then uh, that Lori can uh, can walk us through, but. Uh, basically what you have in front of you is a product of, uh, Laura, I can't remember, is it a year and a half probably that we've worked on this? It's been quite a while, um, and uh, some of the changes are are really minor. I think the main one is that the uh. Um, you know, uh, uh, authority issue, uh, but that's no change from how it's been in practice. And then there were some other clarifications that have really come from many, many working meetings. Michelle, before she left, it's very. You know, you know, probably two dozen different iterations and drafts and comments and questions and. We've had a lot of dialogue on this that the uh, with our staff working group, uh, so it's uh, proposed for town meeting and uh. Basically wanted to have this before the board tonight. Uh, ideally, we'd get to a point where you will sponsor these amendments. Um, and whether we get there tonight or whether we continue this is is totally fine either way, but that's just a little background. Uh, so I guess Wendy, you know, your call as to whether you want Lori to walk through the amendments or whether people have questions and you just wanna go write. Questions, uh, Lori's here as a resource and and.
Okay. Ricky, Chris, what what's your?
I I had no, I I read through it all, um. You know, looked at what had been removed, what had been added in place and it all made sense to me and um, you know, I I didn't review the entire. Bylaw in detail. I mean, I scanned it. Actually, I read it a little more closely than that, but um. You know, people have been working on this for three years, or a year, a year and a half on this, these amendments in three years or more, uh, four years on. The whole thing and I think they're, they've thought it through a lot more thoroughly than I will in in a half hour read.
Or is do you have a question?
Well, I would agree with that generally. And that's my, I read it, same thing, you know, people put way more effort into it and understand it more than I do. You're talking about having the Board of Health versus the Planning Board as the authority.
Yes.
What about the CONCOM? Why? I just curious.
So, well, and that's funny, that question actually came up today. I sent around a question we got from one commissioner. Uh, it had come in several days ago, but uh, Clay was out on vacation, so he didn't get it today. Uh, I also got an email late this afternoon via Clay from uh, Barry Cogo, which was really exactly that question as to why, why is the CONCOM not the. Uh, and so, you know, we'll have that conversation with them. I think in terms of where we were when this was adopted uh, several years ago. We had a similar staffing dynamic that I described with planning. We had a part-time agent with zero administrative support. Uh, at the time, I believe that was still when Michelle was uh, split with two towns and. You know, consistently having to work above budgeted hours because of the workload, so it was really a workload issue. Uh, there are definitely towns and actually I'd love to hear uh, Lori's uh, point of view on this, but there, you know. I I think there are definitely towns where CONCOM is the Stormwater Authority. It's not, there's nothing the state and the feds don't prescribe. Who does this? It could be planning, could be CONCOM, could be Board of Health. I think it's probably a should more common. I, Lori can tell us, but to have planning or CONCOM than Board of Health, I think, you know, we're in a kind of a. Unusual situation because of the combination of the expertise of the health agent we happen to have as well as the full-time, you know, staffing. So, but Lori, I, what are your thoughts on, like, you've worked with a lot of towns on these uh. Uh, would you generalize on like what's the public body that's most out in the Stormwater Authority and and actually I know. There's somewhere it's the building inspector. Is that, is that correct?
Often it's a city or town engineer under DPW who is the authority, so there's not even a. Commission or board. That's a decis- decision-making uh, authority over the bylaw. And often it's a conservation commission, um, because stormwater management does fall under their. It, within their wheelhouse for um, administering the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, so. Stormwater management kind of makes sense to be. Uh, reviewed under the Conservation Commission, however, so many of the towns I work with have a similar kind of staffing dynamics, staffing. Kind of, if they were to take on the stormwater permit, um, permitting process under the Conservation Department, would they have the staffing for that and? Every community is different in how they've sort of figured out how to split the load, kind of, um. I've had some towns where whoever takes it on, um, you know, depends on what other permits are being filed at the same time. Uh, so, yeah, it's, it's not as often Board of Health because often I'm working with towns who have. I don't know, sewers, um, and so their Board of Health is not as active or their health um, agent is not as active. Um, so it it all depends. Sorry, that's not a super straightforward answer.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's my, my only concern is that we're basing this on one person who. Can do this and that might not be the same for whatever health agent replaces him, you know.
It just seems to me like it's something that CONCOM deals with on a more regular basis already, so.
So I wonder if now that they are fully staffed with that in support, I don't know. I mean, I know the agent is doing, you know, land. Open space and upon, I just wonder whether, you know, it might make sense to reconsider. Is this too late in the game to reconsider that?
I think for this cycle it is. I do think there are, if there was uh, concern about that, right now. It's the planning board and under their uh, regulations, they can delegate that, which they have. Uh, I would say if there ends up being a a significant concern, whether here or elsewhere in the community about about this change. Uh, Lori corrected if I'm wrong, but I think we could bring forward all of the changes but that, which would be a big help. There are a lot of changes that. Administratively have created confusion and some of really what's offered here is gonna make this work a lot better, so I feel really. Strong that we wanna get that, those done this cycle. In terms of the jurisdiction, if that ends up becoming a, a, you know, a bigger discussion. My recommendation would be. my recommendation would be let's leave it as is with planning board. They've, it's not going to change anything in practice because they've delegated Board of Health. And then bring that back at a future cycle. And I think it would be too late this cycle to to talk about, for instance, many a Concom. I would definitely have some things I would want to look at closely just from a workload standpoint. Because, you know, our agent is not just this one, but our prior, they are stretched extremely thin. If you look at a typical Concom agenda compared to a typical Board of Health agenda, it's really not even close in terms of workload. And I think that carries through on the work day. So I think shifting a significant work item onto conservation is just a recipe for burnout and losing, losing good people. So I would really want to look at that from a management standpoint. I understand the philosophy behind it, but you know, right now that's, we have sixty-four hours a week. Stormwater was a way to basically help.
Use up some.
Use that time.
So is there any problem with with leaving that and just using the regulation to assign it to Board of Health? And then that way, if it changed.
I I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah. Sorry.
Problem. Okay, okay, so use the regulation so that way the planning board can do it without having to go to town meeting. Yeah, but okay. I was, I was going to suggest as an alternative, could, could there be a primary and a secondary? Where currently the Board of Health.
I mean, Lori had referenced this, and I had the same experience in Marshfield twenty twenty-five, twenty-four years ago. At Wendy's, it was the EPA face to stormwater regs, but we had to do a stormwater bylaw. There was a lot of discussion about who was going to be the permanent granting authority. And we looked at the option of, you know, like, if you have a subdivision, it's going to be the planning board. If you're in that town, I worked for, you know, ZBA was handling site plan review. So, you know, it could be like if it's a site plan, it's going to be like, the concern we had back then was that how do you get a consistency of review if you have different public bodies? Same regulations? And how do you avoid venue shopping if there's a project that requires both, say, a subdivision and site plan review? And they get to pick and they're going to go to the one that's the, that's the easier grader. So I personally would have concerns about something where it's not a defined entity. I don't know, Lori, if that's something you've come across in your work.
Absolutely, yes. And it becomes very inefficient as well. And the process is just, it becomes confusing to not know who is the point person and who's keeping track of the permits and keeping track of the operation and maintenance reporting. It, it just becomes a bit of a logistical challenge if you're, if you're sharing responsibility between multiple departments. So if you wanted to go that route, you just need to think through a very clear kind of flow chart, I guess, and and sort of structure of authority to make sure that those decisions and and all of the kind of logistics of administering the bylaw are being done efficiently as well as fairly.
Yeah, when I, when I suggested primary, secondary, I guess what I, what I meant was if, if the primary was not able to perform for whatever reason, because, you know, staff change, that there was a fallback. But actually, your, your suggestion, Wendy, of having it in regulation and and if the planning board can do that.
Well, that's where it is right now. Oh, yeah, no, that's where it is because the bylaw designates the planning board. And then I think it was about two years ago, with the mutual agreement of the planning board, the town planner, the health agent, Board of Health, there was the change made. And so there were regulations, they have delegated that authority to the Board of Health, who has been administering the storm.
Formally accept this, we put it with the Board of Health and codify the other changes.
Correct.
And we could come back in the fall or even in the spring if we wanted to push it to Concom if that was.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think if this is, if it's going to become like a big, you know, what's trying to generate controversy with this? We're really trying to codify the way it's been working well for the last couple of years. But I think if this issue of authority is going to generate controversy, my recommendation would be leave it unchanged, bring forward all the other changes, because that's going to make the bylaw better administered, clearer for applicants, clearer for staff, and and reduce the ambiguities. And then, and then have a separate discussion about, okay, now that the bylaw is cleaned up, really, where's the best?
What the health is currently doing.
They're doing, yeah.
Yeah, so that could just continue and.
Correct.
Yeah, or just approve this and have it Board of Health right now and decide at a later day.
Why not just leave it with the planning board? Then it can be changed by regulation. If you change it, the Board of Health, then we have to go to town meeting to change it. So if, if the agent left town.
Then the, then the, then the planning board, the, the next meeting or within a couple of meetings can change the regulation.
Yeah, the planning board, if they, if they saw it, they could, they could.
Or take it back.
Or take it back, that's right.
Make a motion, tell me if it's correct. And I make a motion, we accept all the modifications to the stormwater management bylaw plan. With the exception of the stormwater authority shall remain with the planning board currently.
That.
Meet us, Jim?
Great.
All right.
Sure.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Great, thank you. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody in town, for all the work up to this over a long timeframe, you know?
That's a little mind-blowing at times.
Even reading it, how'd they even get to the, you know?
And one of the challenges with this policy all along is that the EPA stormwater regs apply to fifty states. Some of those states, many, most of those states are not Massachusetts. Massachusetts has been regulating stormwater for many decades. And there are DEP stormwater regs from ninety-six, which really govern a lot of how towns operate and have operated for thirty years. So one of the challenges is layering our heavily regulated Massachusetts system with this heavily regulated federal system and trying to make the two mesh with definitions that are different, thresholds that are different. So, so it's not that this is the first time West Newbury is regulated stormwater. West Newbury has regulated stormwater for probably your whole lives. But, but you think of some of the other states that perhaps haven't had that kind of regulatory oversight. That's, in my opinion, why EPA did what it did is to get to some of those other states where, you know, things were not regulated and there were discharges into the public waterways and there were water quality issues that were resulting. So it's, it's really been a matter of getting the, the state and the federal regs and three hundred and fifty-one city and town local regs to all mesh and make sense.
Okay, floodplain bylaw.
I have no idea what's going on.
Yeah.
I read it, I see it, I crossed out, I understand it.
There is one, there's, Grohlind is still in there.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah.
Page one twenty-six.
So I guess that, that kind of leads me to the question, is this something we need? Or is this just something Sam's doing in all his towns?
So I do know that the maps changed and we are absolutely required to change the cross-reference to reference the current flood maps. Beyond that, I don't know what, what he is recommending is required. I do know I'm copied on correspondence from FEMA, although I guess it has slowed down in the last six weeks. Prior to that, there'd been a whole lot of correspondence between Sam and FEMA that I've copied on, going back, you know, at least the last summer, with there's a deadline, you've got to get your bylaw amended by a certain date, they kind of pre-approved. So there are things that have to happen, but I do not know whether he's proposing things that are beyond what have to happen.
It seems like primarily changing the planning board to inspection services department. That, that change is made throughout. And then there's an inspection commissioner, and we don't have that as a position, right?
No. No, we have, we have a floodplain coordinator, that's, that's the building inspector.
Yes, I think there might be some carryover coming.
Okay. We will have Sam at the meeting a week from tonight, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not, you know, I obviously, I get more level of comfort when you say Sam is the one moving this forward. But I'd like to hear what the, what he's trying to accomplish, but it's too.
You mean, aside from the map reservation, which we're required to do.
Yeah, so much within, add out.
Yeah.
And everything else.
Well, but in certain cases, the reason why things are cut out is because, you know, he's now like eight point one point eight. There's, you know, referencing the new map.
Yeah.
You know, and and as opposed to the old. Yeah.
But this, I mean, this looks like the planning board is being cut out of the process, which I'm sure.
Well, but that, that was, there was actually a handoff several years ago from, of the responsibility of enforcing floodplain district.
By regulation or by, is this the same situation we just discussed?
Yeah, this was done within the town where, where it had to be enforced by, by one, one entity or another. I don't remember the exact details, but I remember, you know, in general terms.
Yeah.
And, and so the handoff was made from the planning board to the inspectional services because inspection, you know, the building inspector is the person who's out in the field looking at things and making sure that houses are being, you know, that, that, you know, things are in the right place. You know, nobody on the planning board goes out in the field like that.
Right, I'm just, so I'm saying potentially it's the same situation in practice, that, you know, the bylaw just didn't represent what was being done in practice.
I, I think that's probably the case, yeah. The board can get it, not to cut that off, but there was, there's, there's another typo on page one twenty-seven in eight point one point eleven, where department is spelled wrong. Like the fifth line down, NFIP State Coordinator Massachusetts Department, how will it be pronounced?
Yeah, Grohlind references on the prior page, I guess, right, twenty-six.
Yeah.
And it also says building official as a title. In that same eight point one point eight paragraph. So.
All right, well, I'll.
All Sam.
Yeah, I will. He had done an article request form that did set up some of the rationale of the changes. But what I'll do is have him put together a memo that sets out clearly what changes are required to keep us in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program and what changes are something he's recommending. And he will be at the meeting a week from tonight, so we can get into that.
All right, the next one is the ADU bylaw. Oh, sorry.
That one, I'm going to accuse myself again, process of meaning ADU and then warning content.
Is that, is that necessary?
I think it's prudent whether it's necessary.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just sitting here deciding whether to vote a bylaw that could have an impact on process on going to a permit.
Okay.
I was wondering why there was this reference to a Main Street address.
This is the one that has building commissioner instead of building. So inspector is struck and commissioner is added. So it seemed intentional, but I just had never seen that before. Or I'm looking on page one, one thirty-two.
Actually, I think that's a title that has, I see reference for Sam now, it's building commissioner.
Is that right?
That's, that's his title.
Oh, I just asked that a minute ago and you said no.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't say anything, I think I said anything.
Okay.
I, I, I think that's just, I have seen it, I've seen it listed in ways in our bylaws. I believe his title was building commissioner.
Jim's looking at it right now, I can tell, I can tell.
What does it say on the internet?
There are definitely bylaws, you know, zoning bylaws that still say inspector.
Yeah.
So there's definitely, and it's somewhat interchangeable. I do think there is a statutory definition of one, not the other, but.
Yeah, well, this, this is intentional, it's dangerous.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm trying to make it more consistent with his actual title.
Yeah.
And, and I, I think you guys are aware of that. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Rick, do you have any?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, in a way, building commissioner makes, you know, we have a a wiring inspector and we have a plumbing slash gas inspector and they report it to Sam. So having a title makes sense from that standpoint, just.
But he also does inspections too, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The zoning bylaw defines building inspector by cross-selling. It says building inspector slash building official, see inspector of buildings slash building commissioner. So they're, they're kind of used interchangeably.
Also that official, that's where that came from.
Yeah, that's it, our zoning.
Yeah.
By.
Yeah. Okay. All right, content wise, Rick, do you have anything on the ADU changes?
I didn't, I, um, let me get back to that. I don't think I've flagged anything on that.
So, do you want to wait and talk to Sam about this or do you want to go ahead and?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I am too.
To, to approve the.
So this could be our vote for the morning.
Right, okay, yeah.
I, I would just note that obviously the planning board's hearing is April first. If, if for any reason, and I, if any change came out of that, we would want to put that on for April third for you to kind of revisit your vote.
Well, why don't we just vote on it once? Yeah, it'll take us, we've already had this conversation, it'll take us.
Did we remember?
Right.
All right, so we'll put that on for the April third.
I'm bad, not that bad.
Fire number.
Yes.
All right, and then energy, battery, Chris, sorry. Do you want to wait on this one as well?
Aren't you going to put in a big battery system on the?
That's you, you're the electrical guru.
This one, I was also curious, like, why, why are we doing this?
Because currently we're not, we, we have no regulations, so.
But, but did anybody even fall under this category? This is not your average.
No, well, it's not a solar, it's, it's.
No, it'd be battery for solar.
Wouldn't necessarily have to be for connected or affiliated with a solar system. It could just be a battery storage system. I mean, they, that's done elsewhere in the state and elsewhere in the country now where they're putting in large banks of batteries for grid stabilization and for backup power and for arbitrage. And, you know, there's a whole bunch of different reasons why they do that.
Yeah, I guess.
So, so, so my point is though, there is, there is land in West Newbury and it is conceivable that somebody would want to install a system like that in West Newbury. We currently have no regulation for it.
Or a residential system though?
Oh, no, this is not residential, this is.
Right, so that's, if it's not zone industrial, how could it even be put in? If, you know?
Because it's a utility, yeah, that's, that was the word. Yeah, because it's utility, we actually might not have a choice.
That was a problem with South House at the time, their utility and their, I'll say unregulated, but they give you pretty much what they want, so.
That utility.
Yeah.
Did you have any questions on this, Chris? I thought you said you.
I'm sort of the same question as you, why do we need it? You know, where did it come from, the whole thing? Not that the regulation, but we didn't understand any of it. Again, is this pushed forward by Sam?
Yeah.
And are, do you know of other towns that have this? I mean, is he?
I know he's working, he's working with Grohlind on it. If they didn't, they might have, do you happen to know that they already adopted by law? I think they were ahead of us, but whether they adopted something or not, I, I don't know. I know he's been working with them for a while.
Yeah, and, yeah.
I mean, what's the, what's the parallel if you didn't have?
Well, there's references that are related to safety, you know, the fire safety, the personal safety, to setbacks, to, to, to screening. And, and without any of that stuff, you know, I guess site plan review has some impact, but site plan review is not very binding. And if it's in a bylaw, then it's binding. And, and, you know, it's clear. I mean, I'm an advocate for this kind of stuff, but I think it makes sense to have a set of rules.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking, I have no.
Yeah.
Opinion on this point, so.
Yeah.
So do we want to wait and get Sam's input or?
For that day, yeah.
All right. Just so we don't forget it, and I'll maybe remember when Sam is here, but I'm wondering, page one thirty-six, there's a reference to forest land. And should there be some definition, you know, it talks about vegetation tree cutting? What is the exact reference?
Here, bottom page, that page mitigation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got highlighted. If land that is forest land or has been forest land within one year, I think somewhere should be a definition of what is forest land because, you know, as has been pointed out in conversations before, if not here, you know, in other, in other places, there's a lot of discussion of, you know, previously agricultural land that is no longer taken care of as agricultural land and it, and it eventually becomes forest land, assuming that the invasive. Taken care of as agricultural land and it and it eventually becomes forest land, assuming that the invasive don't take it over first. Um, and so at what point do you define it as forest land as opposed to, you know, a battle field? And I I just think somehow we ought to address that question. You know, because if you have a bunch of saplings coming up in a field, do you now call it forest land or is that an overgrown field?
Right, anything else on that? That'll be next week, Andrew?
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask you if you were here for anything, but I can see you're not.
Oh, I wanted to, I wanted to see what your feedback was on that.
Oh, okay.
It's called a battery.
Yeah. It's a fire save, now that's the issue, I mean, it's a fire save.
It's spelled out again, P A regulation, which is really, really good.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I just didn't know where that was at. Sam and I talked a lot about that.
Right. You're, and it's it's important.
Very important, yes, it's in the future, we're gonna, we're gonna see it one way or the other in time. It's okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have, so so the the limit here is a hundred kilowatt, so we're gonna put a hundred kilowatt system right here, right? Angus didn't like that.
I don't, I don't speak that language.
All right, so.
It's not that good.
So do you want us, we should skip the and the bylaw because this does not have. I mean, they're minor, nothing, but um, so we'll also.
Yeah, there were so many, when I was putting together the packet the other night, there were so many different versions of the bylaw. And and anyhow, it got confusing, so.
So would this be on next week or do we wait, because? Uh, Fincall's not gonna vote on it, so.
No, they won't, but but both of your meetings before the.
Oh, before.
Are are both joint meetings the next, your Thursday, so.
Alright.
Um, the next item is modifications to the town meeting warrant and articles. Uh, so number one is about the proposed library HVAC. So there were some questions or some discussion at the last meeting about, you know, whether appropriate engineering was done just in terms of capacity and the. System, um. But in that meeting, I understood Brian to to um say that he had been a cover report on air quality on the DPH. And I thought he meant a new report and that this was. Yeah, but we found after that it was referred to the older one, and this this um. Table that's in here is actually one that that I had generated when I was a library trustee based on that two thousand nineteen report. And I think this is what he's working on, right?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
So. My concern is that this will not address the air quality issue because it's still a problem for some of the employees. And I heard at the library trustee meeting last week, patron also had complained about it. So I just wanna make sure any money we spend addresses the problem, because this has been going on since two thousand nineteen. So, um. I almost, I think we should maybe hire an industrial hygienist to come in and do an evaluation and tell us what we need. Instead of us trying to interpret it and try this and try that, we spend a lot of time and money, you know, working.
No sense in spending money to put a new system, and if it's not what you need, that's gonna be the same problem we're living with now.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I I. I, I think it needs to be looked at thoroughly, which is what I said before, and it could be. Um, we need an industrial hygienist, hygienist to look at it as well. Um, but I just think we need to look at, you know, the building as a system and and, um. You know, both for air quality and health reasons and for energy efficiency reasons and and, uh. You know, so, maybe my takeaway from. That the DPH report, which by the way, I think Brian actually said DP and somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah.
And and so I just want, I think I sent you an email, I just wanted to clarify that that DPH's report was actually what.
What he was.
Brian is referring to, not a, not a separate report from DP.
That's correct, okay.
Um, and, uh. You know, but they. I mean, my takeaway from that is that there's likely too much moisture in the air and and, you know, Brian did address that in his discussion. You know, um, was referred to as short cycling with with, um, with the AC or heat pump. You don't actually dry out the air, it might cool the air, but you're not drying it out and and, you know, the the duty cycle's long enough to actually, you know, dry out the air. So, yeah, I think we need to look at it pretty hard. I actually talked with, um, um, after we spoke Angus, I talked with. Um, uh, B two Q who had done work here, they're an engineering firm, you know, they're, they they mostly do. Energy related stuff.
They did a base core.
Well, they, yeah, they did the, uh, the. Yes, the spec and and actually overseeing, you know, sort of. You know, making sure it was down the right, um, of the HVAC there, they also did a control system, both, these are the control system, you know, the. Uh, electric, the electronic, I'm sorry, energy. For the town. Yeah, basically, the the control system for this building, for the HVAC system in this building, um, they they did the design and, uh. You know, contracted with the, um, uh, company that actually did the installation. So I just gave them a call and gave Tom from there a call and talked to him about it and, you know, I I didn't ask him about doing. Uh, health related stuff, um, you know, like an industrial hygienist would do. But I just talked about looking at the building, you know, as 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 an entity, and, you know, his guess was that, um, that was a. And I I don't recall exactly how we qualify this, but, you know, basically, to do a decent job is you're looking at a twenty to twenty five thousand dollar job.
To evaluate?
Yeah, to to look at the building series.
Yeah, yeah. And so then that entire article could be engineering or, you know, soft cost versus.
Yeah. Right, but the downside, of course. Yeah, you're you're right, because, I mean, there's a risk that we. There's there's, there's a, there's an upside and downside to going ahead with the HVAC. One is you might get it right and it might fix the problem. The other one is you might spend the money and not get it right.
Right.
And then spend another twenty or twenty five thousand dollars.
You're not gonna gamble thirty grand, which.
No, I think we should start with the air quality. I mean, I I have a list of firms, um.
Any idea what that comes, or how quickly someone can move them?
I think fairly quickly.
Any viability, would you get that study if we could find the money? To get the study before town meeting and and actually keep something on. So that whatever comes out of that, there'd at least be the chance to get something appropriated this spring, because I do know, obviously. Uh, there's some, you know, uh, well founded in patience to get it done, I'd hate to see. Uh, I mean, it might not come together on the timeline, but.
I think we come for the air quality piece, but not for the piece Rick is talking about.
Right, right.
So Wendy, why, um, I'm just curious. The the person, the DPH. Do you think that in industrial hy-? I would think that whoever was doing the work for a DPH was essentially an industrial hygienist, maybe I'm wrong.
They didn't, they didn't evaluate VOCs, I mean, they they have like a target thing, you know, set of parameters that they look at.
Okay.
I I just feel like, you know, we've been following what they said and the problem's not resolving itself, I just think it's worth a fresh look and. I mean, you know, sick building is a thing, I mean, there are firms that specialize in evaluating, you know. I I just feel like it's really important if our employees are not comfortable coming to work.
I I absolutely agree, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um. I haven't been shoved to those firms, Angus, but I'm happy to do that, I just, I feel like, you know, what what's our plan?
Well, I think it'd be good to know what what the price tag is for something like that and whether it's funding, we could, we could find in the operating budget or or perhaps with a reserve fund transfer. Uh, I mean, we, you know, I think we might get to know what the issue was, and I will say until this article came in this cycle. I had no idea that staff were continuing to have issues, I talked to the library director all the time. Um, so it wasn't until Wendy went to the board of library trustees meeting last week that apparently it was, you know, pretty, they were. Pretty agitated.
I thought it had been resolved with. And then they did the, you know, inspections of the slab and everything, but but it's not, it's kind of cyclical, it comes and goes. Probably the first thing the industrial hygienist would do would have them start documenting, you know, when they feel sick and what conditions are. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be like a two week thing.
So do you have any idea like, uh, I mean, is, are we talking under ten thousand, over ten thousand?
Probably ten or fifteen.
Okay.
You know, depending on, you know. What they think in terms of the problem and, you know, how much time is left.
And Fincall meets a week from tonight, so if there was a reserve fund transfer and then we meet two weeks from tonight as well, so. You know, I'd say, so I get on it.
Did you afford that, so you would afford to, does that email go to everybody that had, um?
The twenty nineteen?
Uh, well, it had that, but it had a series of reports, um.
No, I think I sent, I.
I think I was following a a conversation.
Yeah, I had sent that to Wendy, because she had reached out to me after the last meeting, we talked about it in depth, and I just sent to her. Everything I had on file from that twenty nineteen and that that era, you know, and then you had reached out to me separately a half a day later. And since I just compiled it, I just. So no, I didn't send it to the, so I guess Chris is, Chris is left, no, I'm sorry, Chris. Uh, but I honestly didn't know where it would go until tonight's discussion, I I didn't know, uh, you know, where it was gonna go or. Uh, until until I got this yesterday, I haven't, I haven't, um, I can't, actually, this wasn't filed, I just didn't know it came from you. It was in my files from twenty nineteen, but I hadn't, it's not attributed to anyone and I hadn't realized there was some, although actually, I guess SSW read right from the. Put it there.
Yeah, I sent it to Wayne and then he's the one that filled in, you know, pending or.
Got it, got it, yeah.
All right, so we'll start with that and then it might. I I've seen unlikely that we're gonna have an answer in order to.
I just, I'm concerned that if it, if it, you know, was perceived, uh, I mean, I was in that meeting last week, you were, but it, but you could say that there was some impatience. And so if it ends up being.
Well, I mean, we can just carry a, carry a high number.
Yeah.
Maybe we should add, maybe the thirty thousand is enough for the HVAC replacement. And we put in additional money for the, um, engineering.
You don't know what they're gonna come back with, that's the problem, so that number is. Irrelevant at this point, it's based on fault parameters we started.
I think that the most expensive thing would be replacement of the HVAC.
Rick wants to look at the building in its entirety.
Yeah, so so the article for, you know, the request or the HVAC is twenty four eight, twenty four thousand eight hundred.
Just for one part of the HVAC.
Right, for for replacing one heat pump, you know, there's currently a five ton heat pump and replacing that with a, you know, new newer technologically better. Uh, four ton heat pump and and and, uh. So that's in the same range as the, you know, as as the ballpark number that, um. Uh, that B two Q. So, you know, that was very much a ballpark number.
No, I understand that, but I think the reason Brian brought this forward was for the air quality issue.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna conflate it with building efficiency, especially her.
But but my point is, I, after the, the things that have already been done. I'm thinking that my personal opinion is that the problem really is related to equipment. Um, I don't know that, but.
Do you know if they bounce, are they bouncing?
Uh, well, there 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 is, there was a a proposal here, I didn't see, uh, there wasn't an invoice. Or a report showing that the work had been done, but there's proposal in that packet that Angus sent out, December twenty, December seventh, twenty twenty. So it's balancing technologies, it's a scope of work, it's a proposal.
Yeah, I saw that.
To do that, but but, yeah, exactly, and, yeah, um, so, um.
But the problem is we have a number to repair an issue that might not be related to the problem, so it's junk.
Yeah.
So you've gotta start at the beginning and do an assessment to find out what you're gonna be fixing, and that number probably isn't gonna be. The 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 total number is probably gonna be significantly greater than what we have.
Yeah.
My suggestion is leave the article with the thirty, but do that to hire the consultant. To come up with your plan and find out what the problem is and then come back on the fall and thunder, because it's gonna be. Much bigger project than we've been led to believe at this point.
But as Angus pointed out, you know, we have staff who are. But I mean, I haven't talked with anybody.
We've only heard about it right now, where has it been all this time? So that's not on us, we we can only fix what we know.
Well, I think moving, moving on this to actually figure out what the problem is, is what they want, I mean.
That's, to to fix a problem that might not. Have any resolution to what they're looking for is foolish, right?
I mean, but my personal opinion is that the article should be increased so that we can co- can cover. Whatever it happens to be, um, I just don't.
Thirty grand will cover an assessment by B two.
Well, it would probably cover. That would, that would probably cover the industrial hygienist and and engineering, um, that's my guess.
Why don't I try to get a number for next week and then we can.
I think that's the path we have to go forward, to try and accelerate a. A a fix on something we don't even know what the issue is, is gonna just make more of a mess than what we got.
Yeah.
Whatever the number is, we're gonna have to go back to Fincall and present it to them too, so if you get a number.
Yeah.
We can do both of those at the same time.
So, so, um, I also did talk with, um. Our Green Communities Regional Coordinator just to get a take on whether or not this would be eligible for Green Communities Grant. Um, a competitive grant, and, um, it might be. But the problem is they're replacing a heat pump with a heat pump, um, that, you know, that's what's being proposed, replacing a heat pump with a heat pump. And, um, and the way their numbers work. You know, the way the grant amounts work, you know, it's it's based on, um. I can't recall, it's based on actual energy savings or on, um, reduction in greenhouse gases or, you know, but. There probably would be grant money or there might be grant monies available, wasn't sure and until it was really the nitty gritty, we don't know. No, it shouldn't, I'm just saying the whole timing thing, um, I, probably doesn't work as far as that's concerned. And and trying to get something done in an expeditious way to to satisfy the needs of staff to.
Alright, so we have a plan. Right?
Sure. Yeah, I'll say if if you wanna kind of keep, uh, me and Brian looped in on on that, or if you set up, if you do end up setting up like a conference call or something. I'd like for him to be on there, because I think, uh, you know, he needs to be hands on and understand.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll I'll brief him on this tomorrow and let him know.
Right, item two is discussion regarding brick hill terrace, um, and procedure for. Would you plow it? So this would be, are you still thinking fall or do you think we can, might? Adopt this.
I, if you all are favorable to the idea of adopting the MGL, uh, or both, uh, I'm not sure procedure, if it's one of both, but. As I read it a couple of weeks ago when when Rob dropped it off. I I think it's within the four corners of what you're talking about, until you post a warrant, you you know, you have, uh. Significant latitude, uh, so, uh, I think if you're favorable to it, I would, I would suggest. Keeping it on for this cycle, since there's been a lot of involvement with the neighborhood and and I think there's some amount of stress that's caused. So if there's a resolution getting that sooner than later, I think would be better.
So the thought would be that the town would continue to plow. And the town might be some limited, um, repair. Not improvement, but repair and maintenance.
That's, that's what's being proposed, but that seems a little squishy to me, I'd rather stick with the snowplow.
Yeah, I said, define what it means, what it was improvements mean, all of a sudden I could say it needs to be repaved and drainage and, yeah, look, yeah. I would. Again, Tim's gonna have to review, or at least he's gonna have to review MGL and that it's appropriate for this, before we, you know, stamp it. But I would agree, if we can do that and use the public access component to justify plowing. That would be the extent of what I would be comfortable with, I would think the neighbors would find acceptable, so. I think repairs are a bit dangerous.
Yeah, I haven't been up that road for a while, so I don't know how.
It's in decent shape, but I just think it's hard to define what.
Yeah.
A curiosity on that too, since our previous meeting a couple of weeks ago, I biked up through there a half a dozen times, I've driven by. Three dozen times, I have yet to see a car parked on the side of the road, they're accessing the trails, so.
Yeah, nor have I, but they, I mean, the residents say.
They can say it, but they'll stay out of twenty five to thirty times that I've been by.
You're saking it out.
I'll put a camera, it it's not how you.
Your game camera hasn't seen a single car.
It does, but shoot it. No, I, so I, I just don't think there's significant debt coming out of impact.
To not expanding the road.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Plowing it would be a very nice courtesy for the residents.
Yeah.
If they can be accomplished through this, if Tim can say that's what he can do, I'm all on board with that.
Um, yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
I I would say if if this does end up getting, uh, approved and and this becomes legally. Uh, private, open to the public, uh, you'd probably want that on the street sign, that was something that we did in Westford with our unacceptable roads committee. Uh, private, open to the public, uh, you'd probably want that on the street sign. That was something that we did in Westford with our unacceptable roads committees and anything that was. Private, like to make sure there's clear signage so people moving in in the future. Know the legal status and don't have to come pull a report from, you know, from the file cabinet and. The clerk's office to find out the status to have it clear on the sign. Uh, now that that might be good for the other private rights in town. It's just to have. Private way, just so it's very clear.
Even if the, the others wanted to post it as no parking, I don't see a problem with that. It's up to them, right? You know.
So, I mean, does this open us up to requests from other private roads to begin filing?
I think if you, if the town meeting adopts the MGL, I think it would, I think it would fall under the same traffic rules and orders. I'm, I'm not certain of that, which. Legal, but it may be something like that where you would then leave a vote to de- declare this as a private open to the public. So, so future private roads could request.
Motion if they have public access that you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's a different, I don't, yeah, so I mean, that's, that's an interesting question, but I. Seems unlikely that most owners of private roadways, you know, if there's a shared roadway and I can think of a couple others in town. Would want to declare that they're private, open to the public and, and encourage people to park on their street, on their. You know, their short street that they maintain. Um, in this case, you know, there's history and the town has a direct benefit because, you know, there is, um. Adjacent town land with a trail that rolls right out on the street.
We can address the others on a case by case basis.
Yeah.
If they came forward, yeah. You know, what's the benefit?
So then is Ryan's by ten the next step?
Yep, that's what I'm here to know about, yeah.
Like the solution. Thanks to Rob for digging into it.
Yes.
I, I never, it's the problem.
It's, you know, it's, when he wrote it, I, and he brought it in hand delivered it and I said, you know, when I think of like Marshville. Uh, and I was very early in my career, but there were definitely roads, there were public, there were private, there were private, open to the public and I didn't. You know, I, I didn't really ever like long-winded exactly what that means, but when he mentioned it to me, I'm like, yeah, there, and it's illegal as we now see. It's a legal thing. It's not just like, uh.
Yeah.
Some, it's a legal thing, so.
Alright, next item is potential removal of proposed articles from the warrant and I think that's just two, right? The Ash Street and.
Yeah, you had already taken the DPW salt, uh, salt shed somewhere off.
Yeah.
So I think it's two that, that we have. Recommended.
And the Kentucky Regional Agreement.
Correct, yeah.
You wanna make that motion, Chris?
No, not yet.
Right.
And, and at the hearing the other night for the MBTA. I'm, I'm on the limb on this one. I know it. We're sitting in the annex and I'm looking at it. Brian wants fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars to paint. That building looked pretty good to me. We. Are we pushing projects that don't need to be? I mean, I wished I'd walked the space in advance of it and looked at it. You were there. What'd you think?
Yeah, I mean, I saw a couple of spots that had like the painting chipped, but I mean.
It's not fifteen grand worth of paint. It's a spray can in ten minutes.
Yeah.
I think his main issue is the, like, the paneling that's up there. It's really old. The, um. My office doesn't look great down there. There's, there's definitely some stuff that, like, isn't open to the public that, like, in the kitchen area, things like that.
But I just wonder how many projects he can really do in a year, you know, in addition to his regular stuff, but.
I think it was more just on his list of things that he needed to get done. Yeah, I guess again, I, I, I'm looking at that room. I'm going, where's the, where's the big problem we're trying to fix here? Um, and I know we've already looked at it and voted it and I feel bad about that and maybe in the future. When these articles, before they come to us, we walk the sites and, and take a look a little.
Was, was there a reason why we can't walk the site? I mean, do we have to do this tonight?
No. So until you post the warrant, you.
So maybe it would make sense.
Well, it also makes me think, what other articles? Two, you know, a lot of times these things come to us and we just say yes. Uh, and I do trust that the people are doing the right thing and the right job.
But it might not all have to be done in one year. You know, maybe there's a five-year work plan and.
Yeah, maybe that's a better way to get an approach in the future. So we know what's coming at us. Next year for the warrant too, because we wanted to reduce this warrant that happened. So we. Had a work plan from both he and obviously which generally has, yeah, it's a good idea.
Um, alright, so.
I mean, well, addressing that one in particular, then I'm sure we made a point of, um. Somebody or each of us, however we wanna do it, looking at, at the building and, you know, have, you know, taking ten minutes of Ryan's time and turn to explain. What.
Why don't we have him come in and rather than have him each, have us each meet him and look at the building?
Okay, it seems to me that at least one of us should look at it, just so that, so we have eyes on it, you know, and, and, uh.
Tim could walk us through. I'm thinking of coming every day, you know, just state of the place and that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good with, to, to walk, walk through with Brian, because it's not just the painting of this remodel and I think to, to kinda walk through and have him tell us exactly what. Um, I, I did that with him, you know, several weeks ago with like the Garden Street Fire Station. Some of the others I, I did with this one.
Stage, I remember you mentioning the stage as well, like that's not eighty-eight compliant and.
Well, but I don't think the changes would make it eighty-eight compliant.
Not, not like at a ramp, so like, you're not just like.
Well, but still, but those stats are like.
Yeah. So if we could schedule, if we could schedule a meeting with Brian sometime in the next week to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I know he'd be happy to meet you guys one-on-one or, or, or unless you wanted to do a posted visit, which however you wanna handle it.
So do you wanna look at all of the articles or just that one? All of the ones that he proposed?
I, that's the one that caught me sitting there the other night and it sort of goes like a touch tone, like the next year I'd rather have the articles in advance and, and do a walkthrough before we even get to this point. Don't want, I don't wanna go backing off all these articles right now.
Yeah, okay.
So let me facilitate for you and make a motion that we remove the articles. For the DPW salt shed, Ash Street and the Kentucky Regional.
We already did that.
The salt sheds are already.
I'm interested.
Alright, yeah.
What, what are the other two again?
Ash Street. Uh, settlement and Penn Tucket Regional Agreement, provisions.
Second.
My, all favor. Alright. Alright. So are you gonna get back to us Angus with it?
Yeah.
Alright, item four, I'm not sure how to.
Yeah, so, and yeah, this is kinda, and this is not something that needs to be decided, uh, tonight or really anytime in the next few weeks, but just so you understand, like. The, and I, I think I didn't probably label clearly, but I shaded in blue. Kind of what I was thinking would be more like special versus annual.
Yeah.
So I think, uh, you know, that's kind of the, the magic decoder ring. Just to see what, what I intended there and then I think maybe there is, oh no, the footnote. There was a footnote, I guess it got, it got printed, but that's kinda where I'm coming from. Uh, I'd like to retool that. Anyway, I did that a couple of weeks ago, but, um. At some point, you're gonna wanna provide some direction as to what you see as annual versus special. Uh, so everything under this column with no color, I would anticipate to be annual. Everything shaded blue is what I would anticipate to be special. Uh, we can run off, uh, you know, uh, Chris's copy and color because he's.
No, she was gray and white.
Okay, yeah, so that's, that's kinda, yeah.
Alright, so that, that's helpful. So maybe we could just look at what you've done and.
Yeah.
Thoughts.
But what, what's the criteria of the special? Anything needs to be done to have the money expended by July first? That's.
Basically, the money is available immediately, yeah, as opposed to by July.
And that's the first level of.
That's really the, the main one. Other than that, I think it comes down to choreography. We talked about MBTA for a special just in the interest of. Ensuring it would happen the first night. Normally, as only by law would be put on the annual, uh, so it's, it's partly just how do you wanna organize the meeting?
Yeah.
That could be an orchestration between you and Wendy once the.
And also with the, you know, with the project managers for each of these to say, is this work in fact, it's gonna start by before July first, because if it's not, there's no reason to put it on the special.
Well, you also wanna balance out the, um, load for the meetings on the nights too, right?
Well, if, I, I think the only reason we're kind of assuming it would go to nights is the MBTA, so if anything were to change with that, it could be a one-night town meeting.
So if I can get it's more on the first night, then we go, go quickly.
Alright.
Because we're not posting two different nights. We're posting a single, everything's gonna open on the twenty-eighth and.
But the thirtieth is the.
Is the, is, if it continues, it will continue to the thirtieth.
Okay. Alright, anything else in that, uh, minutes? I had quite a few on my Sunday's.
Where are you working? I wanna write through on this app.
Well, actually, I'd already been through before you got up, so. Now I feel even worse.
Wendy, do you wanna just send me your edit?
Oh, no, because I have questions, um, so.
Yes.
Alright, so are you telling me to cut down?
No, no, no. I just want to get you right now.
Alright. On the first sentiment, it's February twelfth. Item B, and this is on the MBTA fiscal analysis, the last sentence. Says fifteen hundred for family in revenue. Four thousand, I, I think this is incorrect. Because we're talking about expenses in the sentence before and then these are saying revenue. Is that what credit is?
Well, one thing is, it, whatever it says, it should say net revenue. Yeah, I don't think this is correct, because I think with duplexes, it's, it's a net negative. Um, so. Yeah, given the, yeah, I mean, this one might be a good one to table and just make sure we got those exact, because there are a lot of numbers in that report. It would be easy to misinterpret them.
Yeah. Okay, um. Do you wanna table these then?
Yeah, if there are other comments on that, that night, uh, but, but I would say film both these until I can take a look at the report and make sure we're accurately representing it.
Uh, on item D, um, the, the vote is six zero, I think. Ted Allen can't vote, right?
Yeah.
I think that's the mistake. It should be five, yeah. Uh, the top of the next page said Parker motion to refer the district. I'm just putting over the district. Anything else in those?
No.
Alright, uh, February thirteenth. We have a new finance director. Danny Walsh. He's got a promotion. You can just correct that. He seems has a secret campaign.
Boost the Jenny's.
Yeah. Um, on town manager updates, item A, um. I would just like to frame this that these were dog-related incidents. It's just a subtle disturbing incident, so I don't want people to think that there's anything other than that. Not that dogs aren't disturbing, but.
Whoa, whoa, he's on the dogs.
I had something to do.
On A, on the.
Um, well, B.
Oh, sorry.
Be a town manager update, it's, uh, D. Um, this line down says rubber wheels bar instead of track. Actually, it's a rubber. Tracked bar, yeah, instead of a steel track. Or, yeah, the product of the divorce.
Anything else in that page?
No.
Um, and item A on the next page, small a, it's just duplicate words, accommodate, it's used twice. Said the commission voted to accommodate parking in an area to accommodate. This is street farm.
Not wrong.
No, but the, the whole.
It's messy.
The commission.
How about to allow parking to the area to.
No, it's, it's more the content. The commission, this was when Molly came in to just get our feedback on allowing a change. It says the commission voted. Um, I don't know if he's meaning the board voted, but we didn't vote. We, uh, just gave her our informal feedback.
Yeah, Molly was in attendance, so that should.
Yeah.
Be reflected somewhere that she spoke to the board.
Yeah. Alright. Um, on the next, on the, um. Uh, can't across and then, um. Parker, uh, Rick, did your motion specify that dogs be leashed during the event? Does that mean the dogs participating or dogs in, in the pond?
Dogs didn't even have to be leashed.
Right, but I don't think that was part of his motion.
No, I think, I think some, I think. In conversa, other conversation at some point, it. Thought it was said that other dogs should be leashed.
Yeah, that was kinda timed actually.
All right, yeah. Um, but I don't know, I'll work that in here, well.
Do you think that was part of your motion?
No.
Yeah, I would just strike it. So you can just say that, the approval of parking recognition.
That, that was. I think it was, I think it was, yeah.
Were they around?
Yeah, and I think it was other dogs.
Okay, so just put.
But, I mean, we oughta, you know.
Did we check the tape? I think, I think the idea was that all dogs would be leashed.
Yes.
Because can't, just have to be leashed.
Yeah.
The idea was that forcing everybody in.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want other unleashed dogs.
Then everything, you guys, you guys remember my motion, but.
I'm not sure that's due.
We'll, we'll track the tape to make sure it's accurately reflecting what you, but that was my takeaway to say this.
Alright, on the joint meeting number one, the last sentence, does the DPW budget, that doesn't reflect the monies from the new contract, right?
Uh. It, it carries monies for an assumed COLA, but, but that is not.
Okay.
Exactly what is said here.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so. Here, I, I would say something, but the budget does carry monies. Um, you know, something like in the absence of a negotiated contract, the budget does carry monies to. Allow the board to negotiate in good faith, something, I don't know, I don't know.
Is that in the DPW budget though, or is that in separate?
We, we carried it, no, we did. We carried the same. Non-union COLA. In the Iowa budget, yeah, yeah. So the exact wording there is, um. I know I said whatever I said that night, but that was. You know, we should make sure that reflects kind of what I said, which is exactly what I just said. Although I don't know if I was that specific.
Alright, article three, I'm just gonna keep going unless one of you pipes in. Um, I mean, number three. Town manager explains this is on cable. Recently, this article had not been included on the warrant. That's, that's not accurate.
Yeah, well, up until, I think it was last year or maybe the two years ago, there were several years where it had not been on the warrant. It's supposed to have been on the warrant every year.
So how did the money get authorized?
It didn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, that's correct.
It, it hadn't been happening when I started and it wasn't until I started looking at this a couple of years ago, that I'm like, wait a second, it says, and, and, you know. For however many years before I caught that, it hadn't been brought forward and then once I did find that, we brought, brought it forward every spring, but technically those years, it had not been appropriated.
Alright, just another item of minutes. I mentioned to Angus today, he was driving and we were talking. I said, when you go into YouTube and you watch these videos, you drop down on the page before you get to the comments. There's a tab. If you click on that tab, it prints out the text. So Max.
Transcribe, so.
Yeah, Max can watch and read the text, so.
It picks up everything.
Yeah, so he should have clarity if he wants to go that way and wanted to worry about it.
It picks up all the, and there's a lot of, lot of text. It's.
Yeah, anything you say is beautiful.
Alright.
Article next page. That's on power recording?
Yeah. Yeah, he said it was on every, I wasn't aware of that.
Every YouTube video, you can pull up a transcript.
Alright, article twenty-eight, the next page, um, says the OSRP will not require company funds. That's not really accurate. Uh, maybe cannot use. Yeah.
Where are you now, Wendy?
Uh, chapter, page three or four.
Okay.
Um, and then article thirty, I, Angus, can you, I would ask that you look at that description, just if this is gonna go in the minutes.
Okay.
Make sure that we don't.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, alright.
Um, item F, B, we did not, we referred the animal control, um, by law to legal, but not the right to farm, so let me just correct that. Actually, both of these went to town departments and boards and committees. Neither one of those went to legal at this meeting, so just delete. Um, and G, A, this is on Portland Lane. Reed suggested determining what I said is what the process would be for relocation, utility and destruction of the cost.
You got any, Rick?
No.
Except the minutes of February thirteenth is modified.
All right, all favor.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted me to review that before you voted that for.
I just feel like.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so sorry, right, so we should hold off voting, all right?
No, we had it so good with.
What's that?
I, he had it. Okay, all right.
All right, I didn't have anything on the next, did you, Rick?
No.
All right.
The motion to accept the minutes of February twenty-sixth is submitted, sorry.
Favor.
All right. You know what I don't understand, it seems like every meeting, we have at least two minutes to, like, every meeting. We have at least two minutes to review.
That's because there's too many meetings.
No, but.
I got all finished with it today.
It's like they're propagating between meetings.
I got all done with them today, I got through the packet, and then Max sent me another set of minutes. From the last, it's like, we haven't fully caught up yet.
Trust me, we're way better than we were when I started.
All right. Next item, F, general discussion items, item A is continued discussion on select board right to farm bylaw. We do have members of the ad hoc committee here, I did let them know this was going to be a discussion among us, and that's why I included their proposed version. And just so you can see, I think we really need to, as a board, decide what we want to do. But if you have questions, they are.
Can I just make one comment before you start?
No, I just said you weren't going to participate.
I think you're going to be happy. So that's why I'm interjecting early. I believe with a few minor adjustments, we would all be on board with this. So I marked up some colleagues, because I know some of you might be visual.
Okay, why don't we have our discussion first, and then can I take that?
Well, can I tag onto that? Because I read the two again, to me. The impasse is two, but the most critical is commercial versus all.
That is the only impasse.
Well, no, horses is another one, keeping of horses becomes.
Oh, yeah.
Another one, so those are the two that I see. Could this group not embrace it as commercial and move it forward now, and see how the process goes over the next couple of years, and then potentially come back if it needs to be?
I believe that. The select board version in clause one, paragraph two, actually covers a lot of what we were trying to put down in definitions. So I think it's. The intent is actually pretty darn close. It's just worded differently, but I think the intent is, is.
The thing that's like with intent is to keep it commercial. Because I think we see a lot of potential problems with having every person who has a chicken go Christmas tree, it creates a significant. policing problem potentially. So I see this going to the floor of town meeting with two, the select boards and the right to farm is a total disaster, so that's why, if it can get. Under one, I think it'd be advantageous.
That's, that's what we've been working on, so really.
But it's, it's commercial, and I will say. I understand within theirs, the raising of livestock horses and keeping of horses, they want protections on that, I sort of get that.
But that, that's not what the state law says, though.
I, I know, but I, within the, the essence of West Newbury, I sort of, there are so many people who have horses who are here, and. If a neighborhood's and it starts complaining, that doesn't seem reasonable, that's the one I can sort of wrap my head around, I guess.
I just think it would be messy to, to base it on state law and how commercials defined, but then.
Make, make exceptions, you know, here's, here's why we want to answer.
But how many horses? You know? Any horse, one horse?
Keeping of horses, they said, yeah.
I actually think that paragraph two under clause one covers this, because it says. That the West Newbury has a rich agricultural heritage that continues in the current operation of its commercial farms. And then it says, these farms, along with other agricultural endeavors, such as, and I would say cross out raising and, because that falls under commercial. Endeavors such as keeping of animals, farming for subsistence, or enjoyment of production of agricultural products for sale, contribute to the character and economy of the town. That actually covers what the ad hoc committee was proposing, is that they are recognized in the town as valuable components. Of West Newbury, and that they do contribute to the agricultural makeup of our town, that's all we've ever. Been looking for, so I truly think that that paragraph, and then down below, you've got the definitions of commercial farm. Which at this time are the only types of farms that are entitled to Massachusetts general law, under the first paragraph of clause one. So we're saying the same thing differently.
Do you have any objection to the, the select board's proposal then, I guess, is the question?
With a few tweaks.
All right, so let's, let's, Rick, how do you feel about this sort of commercial, or the bylaw in general, I don't think you've had an opportunity to speak.
Well, I've been pretty quiet about it.
Yeah.
Because. I'm not uncomfortable with either one. And. I wouldn't say that there's been much ado about nothing, but this, to me, is elevated to a conversation that I just can't. It's, it's gone past me, I, I am. You know, I, I, I would be satisfied with either of these, and either of them could be tweaked, and I, I, I guess. But I don't know why, it just.
Okay.
I'm somewhat unconcerned, I was, maybe, I'm not sure stent going is the right word.
But that's a good point, we got, we got to this point, do we need them, this bylaw is the first.
Well, I've heard that from some people, like this, the feeling that this is largely symbolic, you know, commercial farms are already protected by, even commercial farmers think we don't need this. So, and I think that will be raised on town meeting floor, like, what's the problem, you know, why do we need to impose another bylaw on how we use our property? So I think we have to be prepared, you know, to answer that.
Well, and it isn't even a bylaw on. How we use. It isn't a restriction on how we use our property, typically, you know, bylaws. Or regulations restrict what you can do, and in this case, it's just the opposite, what it does is it says what you can do.
Without getting sued.
Right, and, and it just seems to me as though it's implicit, anyway. And maybe I'm naive, I've, I've never encountered the problem, and I've lived various places in my life, and, you know, I have neighbors with. Oh, goats and sheep and chickens on one side and horses on the other, and.
So are you concerned at all about Tim's recommendation to, or do you put any weight on, on council's recommendation to restrict this to commercial?
Um, no. Although I'm not going to argue the point. But, you know, you and Chris both seem to have stronger thoughts about it, and. I, I very much appreciate, you know, the ad hoc group, and that, you know, you are concerned that people might object. You know, and, and I appreciate that, and so I'm not going to argue that, I just, I don't, I don't feel that myself, you know, and.
Which is relative, is, is people at town meeting, if they object to say, why do you need it? You probably don't need it, but the thing that I like the most in it, the way that the one that's written for the town, is the agricultural committee, and the way it gives them the opportunity to advocate for. And I think the town needs more of that, and just to be more vocal and visual on that component.
Yeah.
So that's why I kind of like that component, somebody said, why are you doing it? Because West Newbury wants to, you know, retain some of that agricultural component. You know, not all for fines and restrictions, which have been written out here, which is great, but I think to have a committee that is focused on agriculture is a good thing.
Yeah.
So, and I, that to me is the best part of the, the document as it sits right now.
I mean, that, that committee, you know, we have a grant. You know, that, that committee and the grant should go hand in hand.
Yeah, and we could also just appoint it, maybe we don't need a bylaw.
Right. Yeah, I mean, historically, you know, the grant was an organization that fostered agriculture, yeah.
The second component that does carry a little bit of weight with me is the notification to people moving into town. And I always think of it with the agriculture farms in Newbury Board over on, whatever, the street that cuts through there off Route one. People who live in there now, they complain about the guy with the smell in his house, he's been there for forty years, he just moved in three years ago.
Yeah.
You had a visual, you should have been able to see it, but if you need a piece of paper to awaken you to this, let's do it.
So I guess that's one question, is the piece of paper going to work, and especially if.
Then they can't claim ignorance on it at that point.
So it's after the closing, it's not meant to.
It's a notification, you can't then say, we had no idea.
Even, even if it was after closing, how many people?
Exactly.
How many people read the documents, they close it, you know, oh, my attorney did that.
I, I think that's a benefit of, of the regulation, is there too much regulation, somebody could say that, I don't personally have a problem with that, you know, and we are. Losing significant agricultural components every time a new subdivision goes in. These farms get carved up, and I, you know, if this can help in some way, save someone, I would like to. So I do see a benefit to it.
Yeah.
It took me a while to, you know, to think about that, but I do think there is a benefit to it.
So one change I would propose in the agricultural committee, if this group is not mediating disputes, I don't believe the select board member needs to be on there, are you okay with deleting that? Or would you prefer that, just like where members still on?
We seem to have a select board member on many committees. I think as far as open lines of communication, it's not a bad idea, it's not to get leverage on anything, I think, just, you know, say, these people are thinking about this at a meeting, I think it's just nice to have updates, if that provides it. Like, you know, go either way on that if you want.
But on the other hand, I think, you know, the board had set liaisons to different boards and committees, where it's just to keep an ear to the ground, it's not to be a voted member and contributor for them. You know, I certainly see the amount of time you all put in, and prior to board numbers before you, it's, it's incredible, it's way more than. Most people would, would ever realize that they haven't sat in that seat, so, you know.
Yeah.
If you have a liaison, keep your ear to the ground, I don't know that you need to be a voting member of.
I think the concern by the ad hoc committee is that this takes up a space that a farmer could, could take though. So, you know, if you truly want to have farmers from a wide variety of, you know, agricultural pursuits. That could take a space. Are you all right with deleting it, Chris, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just want to.
Yeah.
Would have to have a liaison so that we, or have them come in once every couple of months and updates.
Be assigned a liaison to every committee, there's some reason we shouldn't to this one.
Particularly engaged with most of my committees, to be honest, when, when I'm at the time.
Blacker.
But this, no, this is a committee, if you said. There wasn't some, would you be, I would volunteer for that, I'm not saying that's a reason to keep it.
Okay.
Because I won't be here all the time, but. Yeah, if you want to remove that to open up a slot, that's fine, no problem then.
Okay. All right, anything else on this? You want to take a look at the word, or do you want me to work on the wording, and then have the final for us to?
I want to see if we can get a commitment from them, if they would find ours agreeable with the clear and distinct delineation of commercial.
Tim, I can add you, like a few suggestions?
I don't think we're going to wordsmith it tonight, I mean, do you, can you, I know you can't speak to the meeting, but.
I'm assuming if, if we took a few minutes just to wordsmith it, then I can circle back to the ad hoc before Thursday, and we have a final version.
Yeah, I don't think we want to wordsmith it tonight, if you can leave it with us, then. Yeah, we still have a lot of stuff to get through. Why don't I work on that with you, I mean, is that sound all right?
We spent five minutes, start off, you know, give ourselves five minutes.
I think, I think we can do this quickly.
I don't think. All right, why don't you hand it to us and let us discuss it, though, instead of having the conversation, so.
If you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay.
The first one, we talked about before, it may be amended, you mean that, that makes sense?
Yeah. One thing I would also, under chapter one eleven, in that first paragraph, it should be section one twenty-two through one twenty-five A, because that's referenced in the resolution of disputes, so. Why did you strike raising?
Because that's actually falls under the definitions of commercial farming. So that's why I took it out.
I view the second paragraph as more of the symbolic, you know, I don't view that as defining what's in the bylaw, it's just acknowledging the importance, so.
Right, but if someone is raising the animals, that falls under the definition of a commercial farm. So just, so just keeping of the animals.
But can you clarify what you said?
What's that?
Can you clarify what you just said, like about what we didn't have enough to.
Paragraph two is actually what I proposed to acknowledge the importance of non-commercial farming, in addition to commercial farming, I mean, all the things that substance farming and keeping of the animals brings to the town. So I view it as more of a symbolic thing than, like, actually, this is what the bylaw covers. I don't think that changes anything about what we're. But not limited to, that's fine, all right?
Under the disclosure notification, you had put one week, I can tell you as a realtor, that we're a contract state, so you have a contracted purchase and a purchase and sale agreement. Very often, the disclosure notification isn't signed by a buyer at the offer to purchase, but it's typically done around the time that a purchase and sale agreement is signed. And that could be anywhere from two to three weeks, so twenty-one days gives everyone a fair shot at actually getting it signed.
Okay, this was a comment from the assessor, so if you don't mind, I'll just circle back to him and see why he wanted to change it, because you, it was originally twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days, yeah.
Are you okay with that, Rick and Chris?
Yeah, whatever, I, I thought one week seemed a little compressed, but I'm not sure what the reasoning would have for that.
So the handwritten edition here, so I had removed. The municipal lean language, the municipal lean certificate, because the attorney general disapproved it in a switch. Tom Consil said we could go ahead and do it, and I'll just disapprove it if they don't like it, would you prefer that language, or this?
I think we changed it, instead of saying they shall do this, we put may.
Okay.
And we think using the word may, well, the attorney general is likely not going to flag it, because we're not saying they have to, we're saying they could.
Okay, fair enough.
You already killed the select board.
I know.
Well, I had a conversation with Wendy about it previously, so I thought I was going to.
I just got to take it personally.
It's the operation of a farm, well, it really captured me. So do you want both of these stars, or just?
No, we, we just came up with a couple of inserts that we thought. Made sense for the fact that the Board of Health grew chapter one eleven, section one twenty-two through one twenty-five A, actually covers not only commercial farms, but residential. Keeping of, you know, residential agriculture-related.
Yeah, I like other agricultural endeavor, because it ties back to the.
To clause.
To the first.
To the second paragraph.
Yeah.
Of clause one, well, that's why we stuck it in there as well.
Yeah. Are you guys all right with that?
Yeah.
So that means that this dispute process will apply to anybody, you know, which I think is fine, I mean, that's what would happen anyway, they just call the health.
Already available to go, yeah, so that's fine.
All right.
So I would just like one more clarification on something you said, Wendy.
Yeah.
Under clause one, paragraph two, it says, this bylaw encourages the pursuit of all types of agriculture, promotes agriculture-based economic opportunities, and protects farmlands within the time of West Newbury. By allowing agricultural uses and related activities to function with a minimal conflict backlog. So you're saying that. We understand that residential farmers are not covered under the definitions, which are commercial, it's commercial bylaw, but you are recognizing. That they still fall under this. that they still fall under this bylaw as agricultural endeavors. Is that correct?
No, in fact, this is a holdover, I think, um. I think that needs some work, because the function of minimal conflict is meant to that's referring to what's covered under the bylaw, so I, I think that sentence does have to be.
But it still makes sense now that we have clause six, that's covering all, all disputes. So I think it actually does make sense.
Well, I would wanna take another look at that and, um, just make sure that, I mean, this all has to go by legal anyway, so, um. I'm not responding to that. Other than that, are you both signing this?
Yeah, we're gonna check with Christian about the twenty days.
So my question is whether you will pull the citizen petition, because I don't wanna I mean, you, you can't speak for all of your members, what are other people are gonna say they don't want to, and then you have two bylaws again after.
I think if they have a level of confidence that smallholder farms are recognized and to a degree covered under the bylaw, then they're likely to agree. But I do wanna see that, uh, clause one, second paragraph. The way I'm reading it is that is, that it is encompassing these farms as, as important and vital to our community. And that they are, um, supported by an agricultural commission through the Board of Health. Which is, I mean, if you read, read chapter one eleven, section one twenty-two through one twenty-five A. A portion of that chapter one eleven actually covers residential farms. So I don't think we're outside of the scope of general law. So, yeah, I think if it's amended to what we've come up with here, I think it's okay. I think we can get it through.
Not to be technical, but the only people that matter are thirteen people who signed. They would all have to consent to withdraw.
Three here, so I, that's not my point.
Yeah, but the.
But the lead petitioners can't withdraw, it would have to be everyone who signed it would have to withdraw.
So, can the withdrawal happen before town meeting if everyone agrees to withdraw?
It can happen before the warrant is posted, other, uh, so. Yeah, otherwise it will be on the published warrant and it could be passed over with no action, but once it's on the warrant, that there's no knowing, cause anyone on the floor at town meeting can make a motion, uh, that's not.
Well, I can certainly communicate with anyone, we have ten signatures, so that's easy enough to.
Yeah.
Circle back around.
If everyone was in agreement, uh.
Yeah.
To withdraw it, then that could be withdrawn as long as.
So the sooner Wendy can get me a final version, the sooner I can get to be at an off-committing and, and know whether they're in agreement or not.
Yeah, my, even though we can pass over it, I don't wanna spend the time having legal review of the citizen's petition if the intent is not to bring in, it's just a waste of money, you know, and, and there is the potential that somebody could decide and vote, you know, bring it up and vote for it, so. Or I would want that assurance before we post the warrant, you know, that it'll be withdrawn.
Well, I think what, what we're, what we're saying is if, uh, they see the version the board's gonna propose, and if that's agreeable to the petitioners, they could withdraw in writing, as long as everyone who signed it also agreed to withdraw, it would be removed before the warrant is posted.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right, anything else?
No, I think it'd be great if we got down to it. Yeah. One, just one article and, and, you know, if we're capable, but it sounds like we're coming pretty darn close together at this point.
Yeah, I think we just need assurances that down, uh, second paragraph over clause one clearly delineates that residential farming endeavors are encompassed in that, in that bylaw.
But, but the only thing that's.
Sure is.
It's not, that's, I guess that's the, we're, we're adding it to resolution of disputes, because that's what already happens. So what else in the bylaw are you looking for?
Well, I think your sentence that says this bylaw encourages the pursuit of all types of agriculture.
Right, that, that was.
So the word is encourage, which is good, it doesn't say it does, it just says it's encouraging. That in other words, it supports it.
Correct, but the last part says allowing agricultural uses to function with minimal conflict, I mean, that, that is meant to apply to commercial farmers, I mean, that's part of the template bylaw. I, I think we need to move on here.
Yeah, that's fine, you can look at it, let me know, and I'll, I'll find the written as well.
Okay.
I think that's like a real quick question. At, at the, where we say as may be amended, didn't we talk earlier, the first time, I mean, there's, isn't there? My understanding is that there's, you know, sort of in motion, some amendment that is supposed to accommodate.
No.
No, there's talk of it, okay, all right.
I mean, that's, is that fair, Catherine? There's talk of it being.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
I, I, I write too much in it.
If you put in as may be amended, it just keeps us from having to go back in future years.
Exactly, no, I get it, but if, if, if in fact that was actually sort of in active discussion, um, in legislature, and it was then, you know, that would, for me, say a lot about, okay, all these problems should go away.
Yeah, there's a farm action plan that's in process right now, where they're in discussion mode.
Okay, right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you all, I appreciate you all.
We know you guys have a long night, so appreciate the fact that we could, uh, dialogue.
All right, so goodnight.
Goodnight.
Bye.
All right, what are your school district?
It's getting better.
Yeah, so, so did you see the posting?
Posted, I see you saying opportunity served.
Yeah, that, that, I, I had drafted that, uh, so I, I hope that that is.
Squishy, I don't know what it means. No, what is it? So what, they're not agreeing yet?
Well, so, so the follow-up from the last meeting was to see if, uh, you know, make sure the superintendent would consent to release of, uh, their legal opinion to our town council. Frankly, with I B W and everything else, I have not even had time to send that to Tim. There was some qualifier, Justin sent me an email. Oh, consenting to it, but there was some, and I, I just haven't had time to even look back. So I gotta send their attorney's opinion to Tim and have Tim get back to us for whether, you know, um. Whether that in any way changes his opinion, he agreed or provided, so in the meantime, I didn't wanna slow down, you know, we, we gotta we wanted to get something out, so we can start getting interested people in, but, uh.
I don't even know what it means, close coordination with the, who makes the appointment?
Well, there's a difference of opinion.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think we take our stand. Right, what, what else you gonna do?
Well, I think our standard is based on Tim, partially on Tim's opinion, so I just want him to look at the school district's opinion and see if he changes his mind, if he doesn't, then I'm fine with him in this.
I, I think it's based on comments, how you read that damn document.
I know, but I wanna be respectful of.
Yeah, and, and, and it's fifty years of, you know, precedent, so.
Fifty is a mistake, doesn't make it right today.
I don't disagree, but it, but it's, uh, um.
So that's the next step then?
That's the next step, yeah.
Can you live with that, Chris?
I don't know what I'm living with.
Well, so the applicants we get will, you know, will be brought to this board, and, uh.
What if they get applicants? Will they be brought to this board?
I don't think they will, I, cause I don't think they, but, uh, I think they put something out several weeks ago.
Yeah.
But, uh, they had not gotten any applicants, they haven't put it in, you know, more recently, so, I, I, you know, suppose it's possible, but I doubt they would.
So we, let's assume we get applicants, we get three people.
Yeah.
What happens?
I think the question is, is you, are you voting to a point, or are you voting to recommend to the school committee that they appoint, and that's what we don't know yet.
But either way, we'll pick somebody, just whether we prefer or.
Right, yeah, that's right.
So I, I, I feel fine with moving ahead with this process, even that, you know, though we don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find out, see, it's just, I mean, I really can't overstate the extent to which we have been absolutely stretched beyond all limits.
Fairly, I agree.
So.
Move ahead with the process and say, here's, here's the choice we have for the way the school committee, I think it's that simple. I think to sit there and acquiesce and give in is, is.
What if we don't get anybody?
One person. Hopefully the way this was, uh, written, you know, I tried to like.
It was great. What? Yeah, Chris wants to know if he can be honest.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you guys are gonna have to draw straws.
Or maybe you should.
I was just gonna say, root puppy, yeah. A little parting gift.
All right.
Yep, okay, so I'm fine with it at that point.
All right, page school conditions assessment, so we're just approving the postcard?
I, well, so, I, I wanna, when we put together the agenda, uh, there's, there's really two, yeah, it's draft postcard, I would definitely want your your input, I, I had a couple of rounds, uh, minor revisions, I've probably worked with Max, I, I think it's great, uh, would love your input if, if, uh. But the other piece that we are working on, so Christine and I have a, uh, remote meeting scheduled with G and out next week to really start to get into like the mechanics of like, what's gonna happen, what are we presenting, where are we trying to get, cause, uh, we just haven't had a minute to get to that. Uh, so, uh, we wanna make sure there's a there there, we also wanna make sure that we uh, and there is obviously the report, but in terms of like having a, a really clear sense of, uh, you know, how we wanna organize the event and where we're attempting to get, uh. We also wanna significantly bulk up this page and make sure it's absolutely current. There are some specific examples I'd like to, that I think, you know, again, it's all comes down to time, I mean. One, one example, uh, you all saw, I think, the video from last year when the sill was taken down and chipped apart, and you see that it wasn't rebar, it was like.
Scrap metal.
Yeah, those kinds of like, I want to really make the webpage have those, so that it's not some link at the bottom, you gotta click, like something that's front and center, it's gonna take some time to build out this page to where, cause I think with the postcard part of it's we wanna have people, the main part, we don't know if people come. Uh, but the other part, we wanna go to the link and finds, and we're gonna shorten that, by the way, to, to a much shorter URL. We could also do a QR code, but, uh, so this is a draft, I, you know, so I would like some input, you agree it's eye-catching, kind of the right balance of life.
Give me the first input.
Yeah.
Update the photo with the plywood being entered.
For the plan might be through Tommy G, but I mean, it's like, that's, that's reality, that's reality, you know?
Yeah.
It's like you're joking.
No, I'm dead serious. I look at them, I go, you know what?
But that isn't the building.
I'm dead serious. No, it looks, it looks too good, and you have to let them understand that it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, what's interesting, that doesn't, at least I can't make out in this picture, this photo. You know, any of the problems that there were with the masonry, I mean, none, but this, this makes it look like, uh, hey, that building looks pretty good.
Yeah, okay, all right, good.
And, and, and it is not, we wanna make it look pretty bad, we wanna make it look like what it is.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So another thing that we're working on, and Max did a draft, uh, probably honestly six weeks ago, uh, that he said to me that I haven't had time to, to review. Is he had, he read the entire report, and what I'd like to arrive at is a succinct, like, I'm, you know, I'm envisioning like a, uh, eleven by seventeen sheet folded. So four sheets of paper that basically can distill that lengthy report and kind of present in a much more concise way, the key takeaways, which is a combination of kind of digesting a lot of information. Setting things out in a way that's like visually compelling, and it's an accurate kind of ultra-executive summary. So I, I told him I'd like to see that, he kind of on his own initiative started to put that together, just based on his own reading and his own kind of uh, adeptness with, uh, kind of graphic design and information presentation. He sent me a draft, I wanna, I, I had some initial thoughts, I've gotta really work with him to get that to where I think it's it's good, then send that to G and out, because I don't wanna ask them to do it, because it's not part of their scope. And, and it's probably not part of their skill set anyway, uh, but I wanna prepare something in-house, send it to them, and say, is this accurate? And, and get it to where it is, because I think something like that, uh, is gonna be really important to get people to really uh, absorb what, what's most important about this, you know, long, complex report.
Mm-hmm.
So I, you know, I think we are a ways away from being able to finalize and send a postcard, cause the website's gonna be really updated. Uh, and I wanna make sure we have a really good handle on exactly how we wanna organize the evening. So I put this on, you know, frankly, hoping I'd be a little further along, we got the postcard in here. But honestly, I mean, you know what's on my plate, you know what's been going on these last seven years, it hasn't let up for one hour of one day. I could spend the next seventy hours working on this initiative, I, I don't have time, I'm not gonna have time. So, you know, we will be ready for, I think, what did we say, May fourteenth? But to get this postcard out, I wanna make sure that when people go to that site, it's really everything we want it to be. And that's something that I just don't know when I'm gonna have that time.
So should we delay the date?
Uh, we could, I, there's no one clamoring for that date, I do think, you know, we wanna be mindful of the end of the school year, and we're gonna be for summer vacation. Uh, but it's, it's just so important to get it right, and, and, you know, we just keep getting sideswiped by a, a million things, and, uh, there's just, you know, it's, it's very difficult, because we, we try so hard to set our priorities. And then like, I mean, I could go down the list, you could too, there's just a million things to throw us off, and, uh.
So we're extending a week, help, or is that not even significant?
Well, I don't, I didn't really come in tonight thinking about like changing the date, uh.
Well, but.
I think more time is always helpful, because we use every single day, and like, every day we have is gonna be another day of work we can get done. So, uh, and, you know, I mean, with regard to like the other night in the hearing. Depending on how that goes, we could be, I mean, we could be spending a lot of time on that for the next six months, and that could push off a lot of the other things we've hoped to get, now like start envisioning process for, for master plan, that could be pushed back eight months, depending on how things go with MVP, if that's voted down, or if something else happens, and you know, and that gets, ends up on our lap for the next six months, and, yeah, so there's just, it's very hard to make commitments, because there's so many variables, you know, we got the MVP grant due in two, what, less than, what, two weeks from tomorrow?
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you know, I've, I've been putting more time into that, have a lot of meetings scheduled next week on that with Christine, with the respective vendors, and so, it's, uh, anyhow, I think, I think the postcards come along, although with your input now, I think we gotta retool it, which is fine.
Yeah.
Uh, we wanna get it right, um.
Did I comment on the bottom part of it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The learn about the exterior, that kinda, I would do something like a presentation and review of the, uh, study of the page school facilities, consideration of the elementary school building for future generations, or something like that. Learning, I, that.
Mm-hmm.
Just sort of threw me, I mean, I can give you my.
Yeah, I'd like that, yeah, definitely.
And you're also talking about Max pulling stuff together, the most impactful thing that I've seen was that matrix of
Yes.
new school versus renovation, I mean, here, once, once you accept that this school has significant deficiencies. The path to a solution becomes a lot easier, so, you know.
Yeah, people won't solve a problem until they recognize there is a problem, right?
Yeah, and it might be tough to convince them there's a problem, and if that's the way it is, then you're still gonna, you're gonna spend more on access building together over the next twenty-five years. I thought reading that whole study was devastating, I mean.
But it's, it's a dense document.
It is.
It's, it's, uh. So, so, you know, I guess we're chipping away, we'll continue to, uh, chip away, so figuratively, yeah. Brian's out there physically chipping.
Get a picture of him up there putting the plywood in place on this thing.
We got those pictures too, yeah.
Again, not to be too particular, I get rid of the bright, bright blue sky too.
It's about here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, oh, actually, I just noticed, those are puffy, those are, those are.
Yeah, buckle to a sunshine behind you.
All right, well, this is good.
Do you want storm clouds or not?
Yeah.
Neutral gray background, yeah.
So maybe Wendy, let's, uh, sometime between now and, and next Thursday, we can, you know, I, we can kind of download, kind of where we are. Really try to take stock of like where, where I wanna be with the page, cause, uh, uh. Well, I know, with, with the webpage, is what I meant, and, uh, and, and what's gonna be realistic on that. With everything else, where we need to.
All right, uh, and the score?
Uh, this is something we're keeping an eye on, because we are, we are a, uh, you know, regulated entity, uh, that our expectation is that basically year five of our permit is gonna continue to be you know, and every year of the five-year permit has, has. you know, and every year of the five-year permit has, has different requirements we needed to meet, and so, um, year five has now been repeated a couple of times, uh, there is something that within the ten years where we're gonna have to, show that we're inspecting wet weather outfalls and doing, uh, 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 testing, you know, and getting samples and different things, that's still a couple of years out, Lori's been helpful to us and, and, uh, in that, but one thing that came up at the meeting we had with her last week with Lori, and our stormwater working group was, when, when the town had put together its five-year plan to get the permit in the first place, it was back in twenty eighteen, uh, completely different situation, different staff, uh, I remember MBPC did a lot of that work as the towns council, and I remember I, personally made a lot of changes before it went in, uh, because I saw that MBPC was committing us to things that I was like, who's gonna, who specifically is gonna do that work, cause I was in a position where not a lot of people were, anyway, it was, uh, but, so we made it better before it went in, but, you know, I think we talked last week at the meeting that I think at the staff level now, we'd like to really revisit that, uh, cause that's not a document any of you would have seen, it was before the, before even reckless on the board, um, but, uh, anyhow, so the, the permit is, we don't know what's gonna happen with EPA, uh, but it is something we're keeping our eye on, we're trying to keep an eye on. Uh, so, if any of you do, by the time you follow the link, you wanna offer comments by May twenty-first, I think at a staff level, may or may not, I, I just don't know how much bandwidth people are gonna have.
Alright, I don't need discussion of master plan.
I'm told you can't call it a master.
I know, I know, sorry, I just.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
By who?
I mean, in general, you're supposed to not use like master as in slave.
Oh.
Oh, really? I've been careful to call it comprehensive.
I knew you had, and I didn't actually ever.
I said master once, and I got slapped. Yeah, but.
Is that me?
No. That's funny, I've never heard that.
No, I, uh, okay.
Yeah, so.
I think that's what the statute says.
Okay.
I think it says comprehensive master plan.
Yeah, alright, anyway, what do we think about funding ourselves? I like that idea personally, especially if it can be counted as contribution for the.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
My concern is that if we bring forward an article this spring, or, you know, let's, let's say, forty to fifty thousand dollars, first of all, in this town, it is a very demanding town. Uh, we have something like thirty-five committees. I, I, I think a visioning process is gonna be an incredibly intensive thing, and a consultant, and I spent eight years in consulting, they bill by the hour. I don't think, I think it's gonna be whatever they've done in any other town history, I just think the expectations in this town are so through the roof, and my concern is, if we come forward with something this spring that's locally funded, that only is a bigger number, I think, than what's shown here. Uh, if it's gonna be what we need it to be, uh, cause you can do it, uh, you know, but to do it right is gonna take a lot. I also think if we bring forward local funding, it's just this implicit expectation that, okay, that means on May first, we're getting going with this. And, and we know what's on our plate, we know what could happen with MBTA, it could easily be, a year from now, it could be fifteen months from now before we are, can realistically start even a visioning process, so, I think something about applying for a grant to get the visioning, not only are we doing our best to offset the local costs, but secondly, to be very frank, we're extending the timeline, because we're not gonna know if we get the grant, and I'm just, I'm really worried about, you know, bandwidth issues and, and, and people in the community, starting to flog us, because we're not doing this when, all we're doing is working around the clock, like, that's all we're doing, so we're working around the clock, and there's a point, that it's gonna break down, and we're, we're getting close to that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't understand your intent, that, that is what you were trying to convey.
I didn't with this, I mean, I'm just trying to say, uh, the.
I know, so I'm the one that's been pushing for this, uh, not pushing, but you knew.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people.
If this went off to the fall, I don't, that doesn't bother me, as long as it's on the radar, we're, we're gonna be moving.
I mean, I do think the one stop is, is there for this purpose, you know, we could do an expression of interest, uh,
But what does that do to the work plan, I mean?
Well, I think if we get the, if we get the grant, I think we would have to, we would then have, uh, we'd have to have the visioning process done by, date certain, I don't know what that date is.
No, I mean, in terms of the expression of interest for the vision, for the one-stop grant, that's due March twenty.
It's a five hundred, five hundred, uh, uh, character expression of interest, and not even five hundred word, like, it is, it's, so superficial, uh, Katrina's already written it, uh, you know, I would, I, I would tweak it a little bit, but, uh, submitting the EOIs is literally nothing.
Okay.
I mean, is we're gonna come up again?
It's so, so limited that it's almost like a disservice, because it's so limited, you're five hundred characters.
Just put a lot of thumbs up at the end. Double space, double space at the end of every sentence, but the, here's what we're up against, River Road, and that's a significant, A school and the comprehensive, I mean, those three alone.
And MBTA. I mean, let's say it doesn't pass, we're gonna be working on this till, we could be working on this, you and I talked earlier today, it could be December. Like.
We have an executive session, huh?
Alright, so, we need to make a decision on this, right?
Just, just do we submit an EOI, that's non-binding, I, I don't see a downside to submitting EOI.
I think we should just do that.
Uh, and then the bigger question of, um, you know, um, but, but I mean, I, I assume you guys agree that if we do a visioning phase for a master plan, I think, virtually every board commissioning committee in this town is gonna wanna be involved with that.
I don't know.
Certainly don't hand you one, so.
But I, I mean, I, we could also put guardrails on it, we don't have to allow people to turn it into a fifty thousand dollar project. And people like to pop their opinion, but.
I agree, they could put guardrails, you know, this is a good phrase, yeah.
And, I don't know, I mean, just like distributing these bylaws, you get like two comments, I mean, it just seems like people are not that engaged, you know, other than their set meetings and, I don't know. So, do we agree to do an EO?
We'll do an EOI for the visioning, and, and that way we keep that option on the table, uh, and, uh, we're not precluding, seeking local funding for that either, that, you know, um.
But not for the spring, it would be to the fall.
I, you know, I, I think we should, because the board said it was going to, but I think if we do, we just need to make explicit, um, that even if the funding's approved this spring, it should have a long sunset, and we should just be clear that just cause the funding's approved in April, does not mean it's starting, and, cause there's, there's things that will be decided that night, that will have, that will implicate potentially, hundreds and hundreds of staff hours, depending on if something goes one way or the other way, so, we simply can't make a commitment until we know, if the zoning's approved, that's a very different situation than if it, if it's not.
But the funding we currently have is like seventeen grand with the anticipation of a grant, but that's not realistic when you need thirty or forty. Or seventeen grand? Ten percent of, uh, seventy-four.
Yeah.
So, we'd have to revisit that, or you're saying the EOI that will get us some money, or I don't?
No, no, you could do, if you did, uh, so, I guess if you, this is, this would be a good question, I'll, so Katrina was on a webinar for this, last week, so she's gonna know more than I do on the specifics of the one-stop grant, but, um, I think if we went for the funding, for the visioning process, she did get her answer, that, you know, this, uh, question of if we paid for it upfront, that would be considered the grant, the, the match, if we subsequently apply for the, uh, overall grant. I guess my question, I'll ask her if we applied for a grant for visioning, um, you know, uh, there's gonna be assumed the same ten percent match there, so we could be, you know, it could be a fairly trivial amount we're asking for, um, if it's ten percent of vision, it could be five thousand dollars we're asking for.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea of paying for the vision.
Mm-hmm, in full?
Yeah, and then having that count towards a grant for, if the only reason you don't wanna do that is timing, because then people will feel like, I think we just haven't managed that, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point, yeah.
Say the schedule is just started at a certain time, doesn't have to be, explain what that timeframe is.
I mean, it's easy for me to say we have to manage that, you're the one that's gonna.
Well, it's, you know, if you look at the agendas for the last six months, how many of those things came at us that we did not initiate, and, and, even if they didn't end up turning into a whole lot, that, they consume time. I mean, you know, that, the health regional thing, I mean, you, you, the list goes on and on and on, that, you add that all up, it's, it's just, it's an, absolutely, if, you know, you, you know, you look, you look through it, there's just too much, and it keeps coming at us, and, uh, I mean, this thing with the OSRP, if they don't give us the extension, and we still have to get an OSRP by December thirty-first, under a new workbook, we're gonna have to re-scope it, it's just like, we cannot get any kind of break. Uh, and we still gotta run the town, we still got the day-to-day, I'm still in here every single weekend, signing warrants, cause I don't have time during the week. Like, we are absolutely at the red line, and it's been that way, coming up on seven years, so it's just, it, it can't continue this way forever. And I'm preaching to the choir, cause you put in, I just don't even know how you do what you do.
Yeah. Alright, so, should we do the EOI or not?
I think we should, because there's a non-binding, and it.
And then just look to increase the warrant article, the, what, fifty thousand to be sure, or forty?
Well, I think, I think you could propose it at, at forty,
Yeah.
and, and say, we're seeking grant funds, and if we get the grant funds, it's gonna be a lot less, or you could propose it at a much smaller amount. Say, this is in anticipation of grant funds, if we don't get the grant, we're gonna be.
Yeah, I think, you know, historically, that has worked, that strategy has worked pretty well, yeah.
To propose.
To propose a larger amount, and then, and then if you don't use it,
Yeah.
you don't use it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, it, it leaves you the option, but.
We already voted that, so, we gotta go to the tin con, they gotta, yeah, address that too, you know.
Did we already look at CBA funding for master plan?
I think we did, but, uh, I, I.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's not, the same reason the OSRP is not.
Yeah.
Because it's not a specific.
Yeah.
Alright, um, next item is the, um, performance evaluations, oh no, disclosure of the conflict on hurricane.
She, uh, my mother came in late this afternoon. There was no reception, I haven't read. Uh, there's a heart doctor there.
I think I've lost it in my pile too, though. Oh, this one, yeah, I know, actually, I think that.
Yeah, I don't think there's any real conflict, but I have a perception that it really bothers me, you know?
Yeah, I, I find it frustrating that they can't tell us anything, so.
But she's been that big, if we don't want it, then she will not, they will not do the work for Newbury for it.
Yeah.
And I, I feel like taking her up on it, because I just don't wanna have any.
Yeah, what's funny is that, I mean, they're specific here that it has nothing to do with water, but, where was it, in the last forty-eight hours, I've read something, that referenced the, um, is it, who was it an opinion from, that was it?
Was it?
Evra, okay, who talked about the, um, the enabling legislation from nineteen oh eight, is that the right year, nineteen oh six, nineteen oh eight, whatever the year was, the enabling, uh, legislation, gave the, um, Board of Water Commissioners a new report, the, um, the responsibility of, of determining rates, and then the city council, and I guess the mayor, um, uh, wrote a, um, uh, what do they call their, uh, bylaws, their, whatever they, ordinance, or, or, whatever they call it, they, they, you know, constructed an ordinance, you know, a, couple of decades later, I don't remember how far after it was, but, um, that, um, that gave them, or the, the responsibility to, um, uh, the power to determine the rate, which is in conflict with, with what it says in the enabling legislation, and the enabling legislation should override. Typically, if it's a state law, and you can't, you, you, you know, you can't put a, a local, regulation or ordinance or bylaw on top of, you can't trump, sorry, I didn't swear, you can't trump, um, you know, a state regulation, so, so, so anyway, that was a long way of saying, I read this, I was like, well, that must be what they're talking about. And then, and then she said specifically is unrelated to water issue. Yeah, I'm kind of, I, I, I just wish I had some sense in the broadest terms, what it related to.
Cause city chatter.
So.
City chatter, ordinance passed by city council.
Right, well, okay, which is, that was.
They say it's not related to what, I, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it couldn't be, we don't know, they're wrecking a ship. I've got, but it needs to decide, that's sort of bothering me.
Donna Brewer did offer, so obviously I got the, did offer in her email to zoom in tonight, I told her it was a long agenda. I had no idea when it might come up, um, I told her I would let her know tomorrow, if, you know, either what comes over there, if there are questions.
Could you in a conversation, just, just say, can you just tell me in the most general terms?
I don't think they will.
Okay.
Cause I did talk to Evra, basically Evra reached out to me about a week, two weeks ago and said, can we connect our phone briefly? We spoke, I think it was last Monday, uh, she told me in the most general terms, which this is more specific. Uh, all she said was it doesn't trigger the, the need for disclosure, it doesn't trigger the need for, um, you know, rules of professional conduct, uh, but that they wanted to make us aware that they would not do it if, if the board wasn't comfortable, so I, it was a couple of days, I think, before I mentioned that to Wendy, cause I, I just forgot with everything else, and then I mentioned it to her, and, uh, she agreed, it's, it's something the board should review, and she didn't wanna, you know, ratically make that decision, and now here we are, so.
Yeah, so this.
Asked for.
This is better.
Yeah, this is better, this gives us something, you know, but I didn't get this till, obviously, you know, four o'clock today, so.
Hey, you know, um,
Yeah, I mean.
Despite everything I just said, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, you know, they, they, um, I trust them, um, and.
Yeah, I mean, it does specifically say the city charter and an ordinance, so,
Yeah.
that, that wasn't mentioned before, it just said unrelated.
Well, it goes on the back too, say, furthers, uh, totally internal for the city's governmental structure, while it not impacting a relationship between the group of West Newbury. Now, again, there's no magic sauce we have without water, she's gonna take a towel down.
No, that's not it, I don't want Newbury port to, I just don't wanna have anything to do with them.
I know, but I don't, I don't have.
Uh, so, unrelated to water, that, I mean, my first thought was, is it this whole issue with the city council versus the water commissioner setting the rate?
Well, but it says it has nothing to do with water, so.
Exactly.
But, but also, I think that, that, um, came from a question, you know, a conversation you and I have had with Evra, so I don't know why, that if it was the mayor's office that contacted them, I don't think he'd be asking them,
Yeah.
about that.
Why?
Jim could be right, this issue of the department clerk is a big issue over there.
But why, all the attorneys, I mean, they have their own attorney, right?
Do you know about this, uh, did you see in the news a couple of weeks ago?
No, I did not.
So, uh, basically, uh, uh, Karis North was up for reappointment, and that was pending, that question was pending before the council to authorize her reappointment as town, as city solicitor. Um, and the council, I believe it was six to three, to not reappoint, yeah. And later that evening, while the council was still in session, the mayor sent an email, saying that basically under their town rules, their city charter, the council had had forty-five days to give an opinion, had not acted within forty-five days, and therefore the mayor was appointing her anyway. This was a big story in Newbury Port News a couple of weeks ago, uh, so the mayor, over the objection of the council, reappointed city solicitor. So, I would, this could be related to that, I mean, who, 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 well, we have no way of knowing, but, but we thought that was pretty dramatic, move of the mayor.
So, let me, okay, Arrington Heath, Evra, does water for us.
Correct.
Have they been doing work with the report on other things?
No, no, sorry.
So, this is out of the blue?
Out of the book.
Okay, no, then. There's ten thousand ways to boss, you pick the one that West Newbury's using, that's what, that's where stats get smoky.
So, I wondered, Karis is who she has a connection with, right, that she's been working with us, yeah, so this, um.
What, who's the connection?
The city solicit that Angus mentioned, yeah.
Do you wanna, just as a courtesy, maybe you could have a conversation with Donna, cause she did offer to zoom in, she. Do you want to, just as a courtesy, maybe you could have a conversation with Donna, because she did offer to zoom in, she she gave her. Or we might have, or Chris got it, or Rick got it, but just, you know, or do you just wanna?
The Newburyport tells that this is your law firm on water.
Uh, they would have reason to know whether they.
And yet, when they go off for an opinion on something else, they use that law firm, that seems like poor form.
Well, um, it's always possible that, you know, so we chose them because. You know, after a fair amount of work done by you in your office, that 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 they were, you know, particularly qualified relative to water. And and, you know, we looked at various firms and chose chose that.
They actively made sure they weren't doing new reports, right? That's a courtesy. Your report should have done the same thing, in my opinion.
Yeah, my my guess is that they have other fields of strength. Besides water, and that's why they chose them, but I I I heard you saying, but.
I I don't think you wanna use the same firm that you're. How you phrase how we relate with them, uh, being videotaped, but uh. Yeah, we have issues that could conflict in other places, so to use our law firm, it gets a little squishy. I thought they were using it for other things already, just not water. At that point, I I think, I think this has gotten a blur of the lines, and that gets concerning.
Alright, Angus, how do you feel about this?
I I can certainly convey that, uh, correct, I can convey that to Donna, and uh, you know. I'd say maybe don't take a vote, just you you made your point clear, uh, it's not authorized, that's clear. Uh, I'll let her know, and if if they wanna take another run at it, you know, we could give her the courtesy of of. She did volunteer, it's just, it's just I didn't hear from her, and, you know, I thought it might be eleven o'clock at night before we were put this into the agenda, I didn't want. Someone waiting in the wings, or, you know, there were a lot of dynamics with tonight's meeting, I didn't wanna have to that at the last minute.
Alright. Okay, so you wanna follow?
I I will let her know that the board is not comfortable.
I'm happy to join in. Alright. Alright, performance evaluations, I just put the templates in here, um, I just wanna talk about schedule, emphasis needs to be done before town meeting. Um, we've all, we did this last year, right, we each did our own, and then you sent them to me and I compiled them, right? Do you wanna follow the same approach this year?
I think it worked. I'm just gonna go through and head extraordinary everyone. Anything's on the table, come on.
Do you wanna do the same thing on police chief, last year, I think I just, Angus and I each did this.
Well, that won't concern me, because I don't have a breadth of knowledge to really review him, I would have a couple of comments I could just jot down. But to sit there and review, I I think it'd be unfair to have me review it all.
Okay, what do you think, Rick?
Um, I'm happy with, um, I mean, do you wanna do a similar, only two of us then? Doing it, but I'm I'm comfortable working with it.
Alright, so, um. So there's no time constraint on the police chief's evaluation, just for the.
I can't remember, does his contract specify?
I don't recall.
I don't recall.
Alright.
I know with the town accountant, and and with mine, it's it's specifically prior to the adoption of annual budget. I I don't recall for the chief, uh, obviously, this contract is kind of for, you know.
Right, alright, so how long will it take you? Give me whatever comment you're gonna give me.
I'll do it by the end of the meeting.
Alright. One week, if you can give it to me one week, then that gives me time to compile and then schedule. Is that too much?
No. Got nothing to do with town business.
Alright, Rick, can you connect to that deadline?
I do have other things to do.
Actually, I have other town business to do.
Alright, Friday, well, wait. Do you want it to be on a Friday or Monday?
Well, week is Thursday.
Alright.
I I just wrote down March twenty-seventh.
Alright, with all the packet review we have to do next week?
I can go light on that.
Alright, alright, twenty-eight? End of business on the twenty-eighth.
End of business? E O B.
That's five. No, not, not West Newbury.
She's laughing now, that's right, I know her weekend is gonna be that week.
Alright. Alright, are we done?
On the page two.
Alright, any questions on correspondence?
Uh, I have a question for Chris, have you read the study yet for tomorrow's meeting, I I will find time by two P M tomorrow.
Can you see my blood pressure going right now, okay.
Have you read it yet?
No, because I've not been invited to the meeting.
Why?
I only saw it the other day, when the study came out, it's like, where did it go, I tracked your email, I've never received it, so I am disgusted. This is on video, with the committee, you at the previous meeting said, could you add Chris Wild to the distribution list, because he hasn't been on it? I've asked him twice myself, I've attended every meeting, I've signed in the assignment sheets with my email, they all know my email. And I don't get the distribution, nobody asked me about a meeting tomorrow at all, I have no idea, other than I found out through the grapevine, so no, I haven't read the study. I have, you know, I gotta burn a brush file, I could put it there. I I just get very concerned. How I support a group to have hundreds of millions of dollars for school, can't put an email list out properly.
Or won't. Or won't put an email.
Or or, I wonder, yeah, so.
So I can't remember if this got into my calendar from something I received, or if it was from. The last uh, uh, meeting, because at the meeting you and I went to, the lunch meeting, they did, I um. No, 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 I got, I got an invite from Michael, yeah, I got it, but. Did we set dates, no, we did, it get, the last time, didn't they set dates, and I pointed out, one of them was a Sunday.
They were gonna do a survey and get back to us, and I never.
Got it, and then they sent this invite, uh, let me see, I can't see if I.
Twenty-one out of the twenty-two people on the committee.
I feel simple now. Quite a transition in the president's office, from what I understand.
Really?
Wait, say that again, there's been a transition.
Elaine?
Yeah, what, Chris took medical leave for to take care of his dad, and then he came back.
Wait, what? Chris took her.
She was left.
Oh, I didn't know that, I didn't know that either. Uh, so, so, sitting here right now, Chris, you have not received this invitation that includes. Well, includes the same map that you sent with everyone, uh, includes the final report, which which you received, because I forwarded it. And it includes an agenda, you have not received that, I didn't even notice that you weren't on that. I just got a calendar invite, it was sent to thirty-three people, and I didn't ever, until right now, look at who the people were, I just.
Should have been sent to thirty-four.
Yeah, looks like it, well, and and who knows who else, um, might have been overlooked, I've seen, uh. Tracy Blaze is listed on their invite as optional.
At the previous meeting, you asked for me and somebody else to be on the list, it was, I don't know if it was Wendy, somebody.
Maybe it was the select board at.
You asked the two people that we specifically put on, because I've been telling you, I still don't get them, they still, you did it in the meeting, it wasn't like a sidebar or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
The beginning of the meeting, so, so, whatever.
So what, who was the email from, I just wanna see if it did come.
It's from, um.
You got it, I'm really gonna be bummed.
Was it on, there's a listing, show us, show us.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I'm looking right at, uh, who who was invited, um. I I can't see from this, when I received this, it was from, uh, someone from N E C O, uh, Michael McCarthy, M McCarthy one. At N E C C dot mass dot E D U, uh, and it looks like it was, um. I mean, there's some addresses in here that are like Gmail accounts that I I are not identifiable. But, aesthetic glance, I'm seeing, but like Chris Manny is is.
In my board out of Merrimack.
Yeah, um, councillor Rinaldi out of Amesbury, I'm skipping over the ones who were like town administrator, town manager people.
Oh, it shouldn't matter if you asked, and Chris asked.
Says selectman at town of Merrimack was invited. No, I agree with you, obviously, but. Now, I had no idea that you hadn't, uh.
The other disappointment is, this is the study that was supposed to have been done roughly the first week in February, so. Per your request, again, at a meeting, we had ten days in advance of the February meeting, and we didn't, and we had those smoky.
And we didn't, we only got.
Executive summary that they they fabricated for the meeting.
Yeah, and it was only because we pressed them on Friday, uh, because we haven't gotten anything.
Alright, so what's the plan, are you gonna go, or are you?
Uh, so it looks like this. So I received. Okay, so I received this report, uh, last Thursday, I sent it out to you all that day. Uh, I don't see when I got the calendar invite. But, so you didn't receive the report directly either, you only got it because I forwarded it to you, is that correct?
I didn't read it there, I saw that, but when I first, I got a hard copy the other day, when it was printed out.
Well, I I forwarded it to you guys by email last Thursday, but it doesn't look like you received it directly.
Alright.
Which is inexplicable, because of the reasons you stated, including that you signed in with your email. On the form.
And unforgivable, I would say.
Alright, so, as of right now, you're, are you intending to go or to not go tomorrow for two to four?
I have a conflict, and it's the question is, do I wanna blow one thing off to do something that I'm not really that thrilled with, so I have no answer at this point.
Okay.
What time is it?
Two to four P M tomorrow.
Let me get better.
I don't know, where's it at, actually.
It's in the same, uh. Oh, oh, actually, you know what, no, no, uh, no, I'm glad you asked. It says, N E C C one hundred Elliot Street, new room location, B two eighteen, building B. Uh, see attached map.
Alright, did Angus forward you that?
Oh, yeah, no, it's the same, it's the same.
Last one was at Whittier.
Last one was at Whittier.
Right?
Yeah.
Who knows what the third one could be, I I just, I'm not guessing, you know.
Alright, did you forward that to Chris?
Uh, well.
He's not allowed to, they told him.
So all I have is a calendar invite, I forwarded the report to all of you.
Right.
Uh, I don't know if it will.
Alright.
Allow me to forward, I mean, I can certainly cut paste it into a email, but I don't.
No, good, I got it, two to four, building B two eighteen.
Does it gonna allow me to forward that invite?
So do I need to write a stern letter? I mean, I'm really disturbed by this. Is it, is it an aptitude, or is it intentional?
Either way, it's inexcusable, I'm sorry.
Well, one is worse than the other, I think, or, you know.
And again, how do you expect us to want to endorse a multi, well, hundreds of millions of dollar project? When you can't get this, something that's simple. Gotta move on.
Alright, tell me if you wanna go sternly.
I'm glad I asked, I had no idea.
No, I haven't read the study yet.
Did, did you tell me that, you kinda skimmed over it?
No, I haven't even. I haven't.
Alright, any of the other correspondence that we wanna discuss?
I would just know this, uh, the meeting next, uh, you know, Wednesday, I think it would be. Good if, uh, you know, someone from, I I only knew about it because Jack Haley, uh, because Jack Haley made me aware, um. It'd be interesting to, you know, but. It's not something I've been to attend, I I don't know, I have reason to think that the rate study might not proceed on the timeline. That people might think it might proceed, it might take longer.
And Newburyport or here?
And Newburyport, okay, yeah. You reasonably that?
I do.
You you got a certified number from Antucket on the budget, is that what we'd anticipated? Our assessment, a million seven hundred sixty-six thousand.
I haven't looked at.
Is it less than what we?
Whittier is because we got one less student. I didn't know what this was, I just, I saw it.
I think it's, let me, uh, yeah, we can.
Four students last action.
So, if you go to, that's not the one, oh yeah, that is the one, yeah, so, see what we're carrying in terms of the bottom line for the.
Ten. Ten million forty-two thousand seventy-nine.
Alright, so it's about two hundred and forty K less. As this is showing nine seven six 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 five. Yeah, so it's less than, significantly less than what we carry in the budget book, so, yeah, I'll be updating the budget. And so, hang around with with next Thursday's reading materials.
And yeah, we we either went down by four students.
So. On the, um, remote public meeting thing, is it worth us sending? Communicating with boards and committees that you think it's a good idea to go back to?
So, um, Max and I do a training, we've checked out an email, the boards, committees, commissions about. If they need to, if they're gonna continue doing it, we need to do these things specifically. That will be up to you guys, there's really only four committees. Three committees that that are remotely, and it's.
Boards and committees.
Yeah, planning board, library, and tree committee, most really, yeah.
What was the last one?
Tree committee, so there we remain. The board of, board of library.
The last meeting, they agreed to start meeting the person.
Yeah, like, pre- previously, they.
I mean, the library trustees.
In the meeting remotely.
I mean, the planning board is the most significant one, just because of public participation and. I mean, they're not, they can do whatever they want, but I don't know if they wanna do that.
Yeah, the tree committee, I'm not really too concerned about. Me, it's, it it has its function, but it's not. Okay.
Alright, do we wanna?
Sorry, I'm taking two things too seriously now.
Do we wanna just let it go?
We have any authority to wait in.
We don't, we can offer our opinion.
I definitely ex- express my, our our opinion to, uh, town planner, and and suggest she, you know, take that to her chair.
I mean, I thought it was, um, made that meeting the other night awkward. With the remote, you couldn't really track who was where and what, it broke the meeting up a lot, so.
Wait, the M B T A meeting?
Yeah. That was very fractured, having the, going between the remote.
Oh, I I did too, but don't they.
I know it's an option, it's allowable, I just found it very.
Yeah, I hope they don't do that on the next one, I mean, I think it would be better to have, because then you would have some mutual people in the room, not just a focus group of people.
Yeah, right.
Alright, are we ready to move to the session? And move to recess for executive session for N G L chapter thirty A, section five one A, two, three, and six.
Second part, right?
How do you open everyone with that?
I was not thinking, I didn't know if you guys stand as we.
Alright, so, watching from home, the board is recessing to executive session, and will reconvene in open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.